We are live.
Sergeant, you may begin your recordings. According to the computer or set.
Back of this rolling.
All set. Sergeant Hana, you may begin with your opening statement.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to today's remote New York City Council hearing of the Committee on Health, joined with Committee on Hospitals. To minimize disruption, please place all electronic devices on vibrate or silent mode. At this time, would all panels please turn on their videos? If you wish to submit testimony, you may do so at testimony@council.nyc.gov. Once again, testimony@council.nyc.gov. Thank you for your cooperation, Chair. We are ready to begin.
Thank you very much, and good morning, everybody. Welcome. We're going to start with the improvised gaveling. And hello again, I'm Mark Levine, City Council Member, Chair of the City Council Health Committee, and I'm thrilled that I am co-chairing this hearing today with Councilmember Carolina Rivera, Chair of the Hospitals Committee, and really want to thank her for her outstanding leadership throughout this entire crisis. We're holding this hearing jointly today on the topic of the distribution and accessibility of the COVID-19 vaccine in New York City. Vaccination is the single biggest, most complicated, and highest stakes implementation challenge of this pandemic for our city. To reach herd immunity by the middle of this year, to have hope of any return to normalcy this summer, we need to be vaccinating upwards of 400,000 New Yorkers each week. Last week, we vaccinated one quarter of that number. We undoubtedly need to significantly expand supply of vaccines from manufacturers. Supplies now coming into the city are certainly not sufficient for us to meet our vaccination goals. But today, at this moment, the biggest limitation we face is capacity. Capacity to actually get the vaccine into people's arms, on the ground, in the communities of this city. To make that happen, we need to go big, with hundreds of vaccination sites blanketing every neighborhood of the city, with a schedule that runs 24/7, with a staff of thousands. We need to have a coherent, easy-to-use way for people to schedule appointments, online and, for those who need it, on the phone. We need a way for those who are homebound to be vaccinated, and we need to have a proactive, multilingual communication strategy, especially for seniors in vulnerable communities, so that they are informed about when, where, and how to get vaccinated. That communication cannot just happen online. Unfortunately, more than four weeks into our vaccination program, we still have not yet these goals, have not yet met these goals, for scaling up, building a coherent system, and communicating to those in greatest need. The result, as we're seeing this week, is a scheduling system that has been overwhelmed, hours-long waits on hold on the hotlines, and seniors that in some cases are being sent to vaccination sites that are more than an hour from their home. This all must be fixed immediately. I also want to emphasize the critical need to prioritize equity in every element of this plan, so that we do not further perpetuate the profound inequality which has defined this pandemic so far. That starts with defining eligibility groups correctly. But unfortunately, there are some glaring holes in the way the state has defined the 1B phase, which does not include critical groups of low-wage workers, such as those who do food delivery, or work in restaurants, or Amazon warehouses. Also excluded in this phase, and defensively, in my opinion, are people who are incarcerated. With early signs that vaccine reluctance may be even higher than we had feared, it's critical that we invest heavily in building a grassroots campaign in communities of color, elevating the voices of trusted leaders to build trust in the vaccine. We are already behind on this effort. I look forward to discussing all of these critical issues today in our hearing. As always, I thank the administration for being here today, and I also want to be thankful to the wonderful staff of the Health Committee, Councils Harbani Ahuja and Zara List, Policy Analyst Emily Balkan, Finance Analyst Lauren Hunt, and Data Team Rachel Alexandroff and Brooke Frye, for all of their very hard work in preparing for this hearing. I want to acknowledge members of the Health Committee who are here, and if I give you a moment, just to check the list. Okay, please to acknowledge we're joined by our colleagues, Councilmembers Lander, Powers, Adams, Chen, Lewis, Mazel, Menchaka, Moya, and Perkins. And now, I would like to turn it over to my co-chair, Councilmember Carolina Rivera.
Thank you so much, Chair Levine. Good morning, everyone. I am Councilmember Carolina Rivera, Chair of the City Council Committee on Hospitals, and I'd like to start off by thanking my co-chair, Councilmember Mark Levine, for holding this important hearing today. Today, we're holding an oversight hearing on the distribution and accessibility of the COVID-19 vaccine in New York City. Our committees jointly held a hearing on December 4th to hear from the city about its plans to vaccinate New Yorkers, and though many things were uncertain, we were assured planning was well underway for efficient implementation. On December 14th, the first coronavirus vaccination in the United States took place in Queens, signaling a turning point in the battle against the pandemic which has profoundly and deeply scarred our city. Now about a month later, we want to follow up on the city's vaccination plan and rollout. We unfortunately began 2021 with the news that New York reached the previously unimaginable milestone of 1 million cases of COVID-19. We are the fourth state to reach this record, and as positivity numbers continue to increase in our city, we must be hyper-focused on vaccinating New Yorkers as quickly and safely as possible. We have sadly lost over 25,000 New Yorkers to this virus. Our city's vaccination plan must move forward with urgency, as this is about saving lives. I'm somewhat relieved that the State Department of Health has finally moved to expand vaccine eligibility this week, and I hope the state will continue to provide latitude to vaccine providers to administer any surplus vaccines to on-deck groups, so that we do not waste another vial of vaccine ever again. And while I have and will continue to acknowledge the massive logistical challenge that the city faces, I do not feel confident that we are doing everything we can to get New Yorkers vaccinated with the supplies of vaccine we currently possess. And I have to ask the question that every New Yorker is asking. We all knew for at least eight months that a vaccine was coming. We knew that millions of people had to be vaccinated. Why are we just now figuring out where and how to administer it? As my co-chair mentioned, we need to pick up the pace and have a concrete plan in place to keep up the pace for both initial shots and the equal number of boosters. It's incredibly frustrating that 24/7 vaccine hubs that are open on weekends and holidays have only just opened up this week. The fact that we are currently using multiple websites for vaccine appointments is already resulting in confusion for so many of my constituents and others across the city. And we are not expanding community outreach by trusted neighborhood groups at the rate that we need to in order to tackle the vaccine doubts in our communities of color, which have faced centuries of systemic racism in our healthcare system. We absolutely can and should be able to do better than we are doing today, and we need clear, uniform guidance from both the city and state agencies. We also need to be more transparent about when New Yorkers can expect to get vaccinated. Last week, New Jersey launched an online porter to allow residents to sign up and receive a vaccine and pre-register to get an email when they become eligible, even if they are not currently eligible. How is New York City affirmatively letting its residents know about when they can access a vaccine? I look forward to hearing from the administration about how we are working to ensure that we are ensuring this effort has a strong, clear organizational structure, makes the best use of our time and resources, and keeps New Yorkers informed about how and when they can get vaccinated. As Chair of the Hospitals Committee, I look forward to hearing how our hospital systems, both public and private, are working to complete vaccinations for healthcare workers, and how private hospitals in particular can do their part to provide vaccines to the public at a greater scale than their previous testing efforts. As I said in our hearing last month, I know folks have pandemic fatigue, and it was difficult not being able to gather with family and friends this holiday season. But people are still dying. Our economy is in shambles. Thousands of businesses are closed. Hundreds of thousands of people are out of work. So we need better collaboration and frank honesty about the challenges we face in this vaccination effort from our city and state leaders. We must continue to follow the direction of our public health experts and continue to wear masks, practice social distancing, and avoid indoor gatherings when possible. We will get through this crisis together. I want to thank the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene and Health and Hospitals for their work and for being here today. I also want to thank the staff of the Hospitals and Health Committees, Councils Harbani Ahuja and Zara List, Analyst Emily Balkan, Finance Analyst Lauren Hunt and John Chang, and Data Team Rachel Alexandroff and Brooke Frye for all their work in preparing for this hearing. I very much look forward to today's important discussion. Thank you all very much, and I pass it back to Chair Levine.
Thank you so much. Let me just check if I need to acknowledge any additional colleagues that are here. And it doesn't seem like it at the moment. Okay. All right, I'm going to turn it over now to our committee counsel, Harbani Ahuja, who is going to go over some additional procedural items.
Thank you, Chair. My name is Harbani Ahuja, and I'm counsel to the Committees on Health and Hospitals for the New York City Council. Before we begin, I want to remind everyone that you will be on mute until you are called on to testify, when you will be unmuted by the host. I will be calling on panelists to testify. Please listen for your name to be called, and I will be periodically announcing who the next panelist will be. For everyone testifying today, please note that there may be a few seconds of delay before you are unmuted, and we thank you in advance for your patience. All hearing participants should submit written testimony to testimony@council.nyc.gov. At today's hearing, the first panel will be representatives from the administration, followed by council member questions, and then the public will testify. During the hearing, if council members would like to ask a question, please use the Zoom raise hand function, and I will call on you in order, in the order in which you have raised your hands. I will now call on members of the administration to testify. Testimony will be provided by DOHMH Commissioner Dr. Dave Choxey. Additionally, the following representatives will be available for answering questions. Dr. Torian Easterling, First Deputy Commissioner and Chief Equity Officer at DOHMH, and Dr. Andrew Wallach, Ambulatory Care Chief Medical Officer for New York City Health and Hospitals and Chief Medical Officer for the New York City Test and Trace Corps. Before we begin, I will administer the oath. Commissioner Choxey, Dr. Easterling, and Dr. Wallach, I will call on you each individually for a response. Please raise your right hands. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this committee and to respond honestly to council member questions? Commissioner Choxey?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Dr. Easterling?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. And Dr. Wallach?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Commissioner Choxey, you may begin when you are ready.
Thank you very much. Good morning, Chairs Levine and Rivera and members of the committees. I'm Dr. Dave Choxey, Commissioner of the New York City Department of Health and Mental Hygiene. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today and provide an update on the city's distribution of COVID-19 vaccine to New Yorkers. As you heard, I am joined today by First Deputy Commissioner and Chief Equity Officer Dr. Torian Easterling, and Dr. Andrew Wallach, Ambulatory Care Chief Medical Officer for New York City Health and Hospitals and Chief Medical Officer for the New York City Test and Trace Corps. I would like to start by recognizing how far we have come in the last year. This pandemic has uprooted our lives. It has taken too many family and friends, destroyed beloved businesses, fundamentally changed our education system, and has kept us physically apart from loved ones for far too long. We are elated to have a vaccine available to New Yorkers, and the beginning of distribution is exciting and provides hope for the coming year. However, we are still in a state of emergency, and COVID-19 cases are increasing throughout the country, as well as here in New York City. New Yorkers need to remember what we are fighting for and what helped us to flatten the curve during the spring and the summer. In a ship during a storm, you would not throw away your oars upon seeing the shore. You would paddle until you reached land, and that is what we all must do here. We are still in the center of the storm. Everyone must continue getting tested regularly and sticking to the public health prevention measures that we know work. Stay home if you're not feeling well. Wash your hands regularly. Wear a mask or face covering and maintain physical distance. Together, we can help save lives as we continue to accelerate our vaccination efforts. As of now, there are two COVID-19 vaccines authorized for emergency use by the FDA, manufactured by Pfizer/BioNTech and Moderna. Extensive clinical studies have shown these vaccines to be safe and highly effective. There is currently a limited supply of vaccines, and to ensure the available vaccine is allocated in the most equitable manner, it is being prioritized for administration to certain groups. As many of you know, New York State is establishing phases of distribution based on federal recommendations, with the intention of prioritizing people who are at greatest risk for exposure to COVID-19 or severe illness from COVID-19. Initially, only high-risk healthcare workers and long-term care facility staff and residents were eligible to get vaccinated. The state then opened up eligibility to other healthcare workers, including emergency medical services and ambulatory care workers, as well as public health workers who have direct contact with patients and home care and hospice workers. We are pleased that the state has responded to our strong recommendation to expand beyond these initial populations to ensure vaccines are utilized to their fullest and that all vulnerable New Yorkers are reached. As of this week, additional populations, including seniors 75 years and older, are eligible to receive the vaccine. It is particularly important that elderly New Yorkers, who are much more likely to experience complications from COVID-19, receive vaccines immediately. We continue to prepare for state authorization for additional populations to become eligible, and we have further called on the federal government to support our efforts through advanced planning and increased vaccine manufacturing. To coordinate New York City's multifaceted efforts to promote and distribute the vaccine, Mayor de Blasio created the Vaccine Command Center, or the VCC. The VCC is an inter-agency effort co-led by Deputy Mayor Melanie Hartzog and me, bringing together experts and doers from across city government. This reflects a whole-of-government approach that includes many city agencies, including the Health Department, New York City Health and Hospitals, Emergency Management, the Mayor's Office, and the Task Force on Racial Inclusion and Equity. Leveraging existing relationships across the city and using data-driven decision-making, the VCC is streamlining our planning and outreach surrounding the vaccine distribution in order to turn vaccines into vaccinations. The VCC team, in partnership with the Health Department and Health and Hospitals, and in accordance with the guidance issued by state officials, is implementing plans to distribute our allocated vaccine doses across the city. The city is collecting and sharing data in real time on the number of vaccine doses reserved by the federal government for the city, delivered to the city, and administered to New Yorkers. This is all available on the Health Department's website, making us one of the most transparent jurisdictions in the world with respect to our vaccination campaign. As of today, New York City has been allocated 885,325 vaccine doses. 668,175 doses have been delivered to the city, and over 239,000 doses have been administered. That's 216,014 first doses and 23,310 second doses. The mayor has set an ambitious goal to administer 1 million doses of the vaccine by the end of this month, and we are laser-focused on ramping up our operations to meet this goal. Keeping track of and being transparent about all of this information allows us to map our progress, stay accountable, and most importantly, identify where we need to direct resources to ensure all New Yorkers have the information they need and access to vaccinations. To ensure vaccine is widely available, the city is scaling up distribution sites for vaccine to ensure equitable access as supply increases. Sites are being established in all five boroughs where New Yorkers who are eligible can get vaccinated. We just opened two 24/7 mass vaccination sites at the Brooklyn Army Terminal Annex Building and the Bathgate Industrial Park in the Bronx, as well as three COVID-19 vaccine hubs in Brooklyn, Queens, and the Bronx that are open seven days a week from 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Our plan is to launch an additional 12 COVID-19 vaccine hubs and three additional 24/7 sites, making one in each borough by this Saturday, to reach our goal of administering 1 million doses by the end of this month. New Yorkers can make appointments for vaccination on our website via nyc.gov/vaccinefinder or call 1-877-VAX4NYC. That's V-A-X for N-Y-C. We will continue to expand vaccine offerings and refine the user experience through continuous improvement to ensure all New Yorkers who are able to get vaccinated are vaccinated. Underlying these operations is our unwavering commitment to equitable distribution, access, and uptake of vaccines. We know the context of our vaccine efforts, persistent, systemic, and intergenerational racism faced by people and communities of color that manifests in the form of inequitable access to basic resources, including employment, housing, food, green spaces, and healthcare. This, combined with explicit and implicit interpersonal racism, has led to a greater burden of chronic disease and increased the risk of morbidity and mortality for Black and Hispanic/Latino New Yorkers throughout the pandemic. We also know that people of color are more likely to experience racism within the healthcare system, exacerbating the health burden for individuals who require hospitalization or other care. These factors have also created circumstances where Black and Hispanic/Latino people are more likely than white people to be employed in roles that are considered essential during this outbreak, and therefore less able to avoid exposure. With this in mind, we have developed a vaccine equity strategy that focuses on ensuring access and uptake of the COVID-19 vaccines by all New Yorkers and holds us accountable to monitor vaccine uptake by race and ethnicity, as well as by neighborhood. We will support access to the COVID-19 vaccines by ensuring that we have enough vaccination locations in neighborhoods that have experienced ongoing disinvestment and inequities, as well as high rates of COVID-19 infection and death. We're also working to ensure that our messaging reaches and is heard by these neighborhoods by hosting community conversations, listening to and working with trusted messengers to reach more New Yorkers with our message than ever before. In addition, our vaccine site planning includes eliminating barriers for people with disabilities, people who do not read or speak English, people who are undocumented, people with mental illness, people with substance use disorders, and people who are homeless. From my own clinical experience, I know how important it is to hold individuals in each of these groups and many more in mind if we are to truly reach those most marginalized and at risk. In addition to advancing widespread accessibility of vaccination sites, our equitable approach to vaccinations is rooted in engaging directly with New Yorkers to strengthen vaccine confidence and public trust. In partnership with our colleagues at the VCC and other city agencies, including the Task Force on Racial Inclusion and Equity, we are undertaking broad-scale efforts with community members. We are working with community organizations to disseminate anti-racist and culturally and linguistically appropriate vaccine communications. We're also working with community and faith-based organizations to engage residents in conversations about vaccine safety and efficacy, addressing vaccine hesitancy with empathy and humility. We are further building capacity through training of healthcare providers, community and faith-based organizations, and other agencies to partner on vaccine information dissemination to communities by trusted messengers. We have already shared messaging with thousands of community partners, hosted dozens of engagement events, and are deploying experts to community forums citywide. These plans are evolving daily as we receive feedback from partners and incorporate lessons learned from the first several months of the pandemic. We look forward to further ramping up these community engagement efforts as the vaccine rollout continues. Throughout our work to ensure that New Yorkers can access the vaccine and have the information they need to decide to get the vaccine, we must also pay close attention to vaccination rates and be ready to respond quickly if we see different rates of vaccination across neighborhoods or across racial or ethnic groups. We're also monitoring safety trends that are formally reported to the federal Vaccine Adverse Event Reporting System, as well as informal reports of vaccine side effects, as well as misinformation on social media, and will be prepared to act if we begin to see worrying trends. Finally, we are using opportunities created by our unprecedented vaccination efforts to dismantle systems that have oppressed people of color, LGBTQIA+ people, people with disabilities, people who are undocumented, people who have contact with the criminal justice system, and older adults. We are educating vaccinators about the importance of collecting demographic information, particularly race and ethnicity, so that we can ensure that our resources reach communities that need them most. Finally, we are building on vaccine education to increase overall health literacy so that all New Yorkers are able to make informed decisions about their health and wellness. It was almost a month ago when I had the privilege of administering one of the first COVID-19 vaccinations to Veronica Delgado, a physician assistant in the emergency department at Ellenhurst Hospital. Her words about what it felt like have stayed with me since then, like that first bit of sunlight in the morning after a very long, dark, and frightening night. Indeed, there is a light at the end of the tunnel, but even as we look forward, we must look back and recommit ourselves to the core public health tools that work to curb the spread of this vicious virus. Thank you again to Chairs Rivera and Levine for holding this hearing today and for your support in amplifying important, science-based information about COVID-19 and vaccines. I am happy to answer your questions.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'm now going to turn it over to questions from Chair Rivera, followed by Chair Levine. Panelists, please stay unmuted if possible during this question-and-answer period. Thank you. Chair Rivera, please begin.
Thank you so much. Good morning, everyone, again, and thank you for your testimony. It's very much appreciated. Ask a few questions, and I know we already have quite a few council members who want to speak. So I guess I'll start with the portal, the patient portal. I think we get the most amount of questions in the last few days on who is eligible, how do they sign up. Some of that information has been disseminated. I know you can go into the online portal, but there is also a hotline that I heard had some technical difficulties, and I'll ask you about that in a second. So why do we have three different patient portals for H&amp;H sites, vaccine hubs, and DOHMH locations? That's before we even get into the private options. This process can be very confusing, particularly for seniors or those without an internet connection. So what is being done to streamline this process?
Thank you so much for this important question, and I certainly understand, you know, with respect to wanting it to be as seamless a process as possible to be able to sign up for an appointment for a vaccination. I am grateful that tens of thousands of New Yorkers have already been able to successfully make appointments, both at city sites as well as non-city sites. We have tried to aggregate all of that information at the website that I mentioned, nyc.gov/vaccine. We have tried to aggregate all of that information at the website that I mentioned, NYC.gov/vaccinefinder, but recognize that some people may have limited internet access or limited proficiency and have set up this phone line, 877-VAX4NYC, to help with navigation as well. We have also been working for weeks to ensure that healthcare providers, clinicians, the people that New Yorkers already trust to help connect them with healthcare are empowered with the information that they need, and that's another important pillar of our efforts. We will work continuously to improve that process. I do want to acknowledge that the different scheduling systems that exist, although we will strive to make them as seamless and aligned as possible, there are some important reasons why they do have to be separate, particularly from the clinical standpoint. We know that users experience the front end of a system when they are scheduling an appointment, but it's very important that that information about each person go to the part of the system that is behind the curtain. For example, at health and hospitals, connecting into the electronic medical record so that that information is linked with a given patient's medical history. That's an important part of it. Or at our health department sites, ensuring that the people who are actually administering the vaccination have the information that they need about the person at the time that they see them physically and give them the shot. So those are some of the reasons that there are some separate scheduling systems. But again, I will say, we do have to ensure that it is as streamlined and simple and aligned across all of those different places as possible.
So just to clarify, is the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene going to be creating a single patient portal or not?
We do have the aggregated site, the Vaccine Finder. It will be a place where you can navigate to the right person, the right place to sign up for a vaccination. And that will be, you know, a patient portal, depending on whichever site you choose. It could be a city site, it could be a non-city site. There is no unified, you know, scheduling system as exists in some, you know, countries that have universal healthcare to be able to make an appointment, you know, across all of those different sites.
I, you know, well, universal healthcare is something that we're all pushing for. But why don't you use the same electronic medical record system as health and hospitals? Do you, I mean, particularly since health and hospitals just spent so much money to implement it?
The short answer, Chair Rivera, is that we do not use that same electronic medical record, in part because health and hospitals delivers a much wider spectrum of healthcare, you know, from its hospitals to its outpatient clinics to this vaccination effort. But we are working very closely, hand in hand, with our colleagues at health and hospitals to ensure that the experience of signing up for an appointment, the information that is asked about, all of those things are aligned and unified.
And that's why I'm asking, because, you know, we want everything to be aligned and unified. We certainly want to support you with that. It just feels like between the multiple patient portals, and I realize one is an aggregate, and the fact that our health agencies aren't using the same EMR is a little bit confusing for me. I understand what you're saying in terms of the vastness and how broad the services are, but everyone knows that those systems are customizable and can be tailored to your staff and what they need. I mean, anyone who spent 10 minutes on Salesforce knows that. But let me go into a little bit about that spirit of collaboration, because I do think that is important. Do you believe that having the separate press conferences and announcements from state and city health leaders is the best communication strategy to an already hesitant populace? And do you have plans to work a little more closely with the state, considering the urgency and how important this situation is?
Yes, thank you. And certainly, I would echo the urgency and the need to work across all levels of government, yes, city and state, but also with our federal partners as well, because the process of turning vaccines into vaccination relies upon collaboration and planning across those levels of government. We have been working, you know, not just on a day-to-day basis, but on an hour-to-hour basis in constant communication with our counterparts at both the state and the federal level. I'm in regular touch with my colleague, Dr. Howard Zucker, the State Health Commissioner. At a staff level, our immunization staff are in constant communication with their counterparts, both at the State Department of Health as well as at the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention. And I know that the mayor and the governor are in regular touch as well. And so we are fully committed to ensuring that we have the channels of communication that we need to be able to provide clear messages for the everyday New Yorkers, who I understand are trying to find out information about when they are eligible and where they can go to actually get their vaccination.
Have there been any reports, actually, let me ask you about, because you mentioned the federal government. How many doses are we getting from the federal government each week currently?
Well, I would start by saying that the amount changes week to week. And often, we are not made aware of that allotment until a few days prior to receiving the doses for the week. In some weeks, we've received upwards of 200,000 doses. In other weeks, including this one, we've received about 100,000 doses. It does make it more challenging for us to be able to plan our vaccination efforts with respect to how much capacity to make available, how many appointments to make available, because of those uncertainties about the supply of the vaccine. So we have been, and again, you know, from the mayor down, people have been advocating to make sure that New York City both gets a sufficient supply, but almost as importantly, has the ability to plan, not just for next week, but for the entire duration of our vaccination campaign, because that would help us to both quicken the pace of vaccinations and also be able to more clearly communicate about what people who are not currently eligible may be able to expect with respect to when they get a vaccine.
So I just want to ask, so how many doses do we receive each week? Like, where do we get those doses from and where in New York City are they sent to initially?
Certainly. So just using this week as an example, we're receiving about 100,000 doses. Generally, those deliveries occur toward the beginning of the week, Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday. The way that it works just physically is that the doses, remember, there are two different vaccines, and then there are first and second doses. Those deliveries are managed by the health department with respect to different providers placing orders. But then the vaccines themselves are directly shipped to the places that are administering the vaccine, whether it's a hospital or a community health center or the health department or health and hospitals. And so that's how the delivery mechanism works.
Can you clarify of individuals in patient advocacy roles and their eligibility, such as social workers and doulas, who are frequently in and out of hospital settings? When are, can you clarify when they're able to receive the vaccine?
Yes, my understanding, and again, this is based on the state guidance for Phase 1A, which addresses healthcare workers. So for the examples that you've cited, social workers, doulas, anyone else who is in a patient-facing role within the healthcare setting, who interacts with the public in that way is currently eligible for vaccination.
When do we expect eligibility for those who are incarcerated?
This is another very important question. And, you know, as a doctor, I have to say it's something that I'm very concerned about, given what we have seen with respect to outbreaks in correctional facilities, you know, around the country. So the state, as you know, articulated guidance for Phase 1B that began yesterday that applied to corrections officers, so they are now eligible. Correctional Health, which is the health services within prisons and jails, they are now eligible. They have started to vaccinate some of their high-risk population among people who are incarcerated. And so that has begun with a few hundred vaccinations. But that broader pool of people who are incarcerated are not yet eligible per the state guidance. I do hope that the state will consider making them eligible very soon. In fact, as part of Phase 1B that we're in right now, given the health consequences that I mentioned.
You mentioned the Task Force on Racial Inclusion and Equity and community conversations on anti-racism and culturally linguistic information that would be disseminated in some of these communities that we mentioned have a lot of mistrust. How are you working with community-based organizations? How has the transition been from testing and tracing? I think currently you're working with maybe roughly 40 community-based organizations. There's a list I know online. How are you supporting their work, which is very culturally humble, which will be, as you know, critical to getting this information out? Considering how many people are actually, I don't want to say refusing, but they are hesitant. And from what I know, about even a third of some of the hospital workers in our health and hospital system are hesitant about receiving the vaccine. So what kind of support is the city giving to these CBOs?
Yes, thank you so much. I will begin briefly and turn it to my colleague, Dr. Easterling, on this question. But Chair Rivera, I wanted to mention, just to echo how important, you know, the notion of humility and engagement, you know, with respect to people who already have these deep trusted relationships in the communities that we aim to serve. As part of our vaccination efforts, we have already engaged over 1,100 community-based organizations, empowering them with the information that they need about our vaccination efforts and enlisting them as ambassadors for the reasons that you've mentioned. But I'll let Dr. Easterling say a little bit more to your specific questions. If someone could just unmute Dr. Easterling, please.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Chairs, the co-chair. Thank you all, the elected officials, for having me today. Commissioner is absolutely right. We continue to work with our community partners as we support the city in responding to this COVID-19 pandemic. Co-chair Rivera, you mentioned a couple of things, and I just want to be able to expound a little bit. The city launched the Racial Inclusion and Equity Task Force in June 2020, really recognizing that there have been a number of priority neighborhoods that we identified as bearing disproportionate impact of COVID-19. We continue to center those communities by ensuring that there is outreach and engagement, by understanding and working with community partners who already provide social services in those neighborhoods and are the very fabric of supporting residents in those geographical areas. We are also continuing to support our community-based organizations in a number of different ways. Through our test and trace, we stood up our community advisory board, which had over 70, which have over 70 organizations, which have helped to inform our test and trace efforts, all three pillars, as well as ensuring that we were doing canvassing and outreach. And we have had a number of conversations, and as you've heard from the commissioner, have now already trained and shared our information to ensure that they're also passing this information into the communities that they're working in, as well as the organizations who are contracted. We mentioned the 41 community-based organizations who receive engagement grant awards to do the very engagement and outreach in their own neighborhoods. And so we're working with a number of subsets, and we're continuing to expand that list every day as we're holding community conversations. And we're also equipping our staff across city agencies to ensure that they also have this information, as they're often coming from the communities that we are centering, as we know have certainly been burdened by COVID-19, and often the very messengers that we want to be sharing this information. At our own vaccine hubs, you know, at our clinics, we are matching linguistics with the top languages that are spoken in neighborhoods. We are ensuring that our materials are printed and available in the top 13 languages. But we also do additional analysis to understand other languages that are spoken, other dialects that are spoken in those neighborhoods as well. And so this is certainly part of our way of ensuring that there is an equitable distribution plan that is integrated in the overall city's plan to ensure that all New Yorkers receive a vaccine.
Understood. And I'm sure we're going to hear from them today. And I just want to ask about the portal itself, and then I'm going to pass it to Chair Levine. Have there, on average, how many available time slots are there for folks looking to get vaccinated?
Yes, Chair Rivera, can, if I may, you mean in a given week or can you clarify?
For example, and have there been any reports of tech issues when signing up to get vaccinated? We saw that a lot yesterday. And so how are we monitoring those complaints?
Yes, thank you. This is also, you know, an extraordinarily important part of people's experience with respect to being able to sign up for a vaccination. You know, in general, we have several thousand slots that are available on a given day currently at city sites. I want to again clarify that that's not the full universe of vaccinations that are occurring in New York City, because hospitals, community health centers, urgent care clinics, all of those are also access points for New Yorkers who are eligible to be able to get vaccinated. And that's why we have that in one location in our Vaccine Finder. Over the course...
Because I only have, I only want to take another minute. I wanted to just ask about the eligibility, because in New Jersey, anyone can register to be on a waitlist to receive the vaccine once they are eligible. And last week, the city announced their plans to do this for those 75 and older. Are there plans to incorporate that into the overall system to schedule your vaccination? And then the last question is that the federal government is said to be making changes to their recommendations for vaccine eligibility that will prioritize vaccinating all Americans over 65. Do you agree with that decision? And will you be making changes to make sure that we get the proper information to these eligible individuals? And thank you very much for the time.
Of course. I will answer both questions briefly. The short answer to your first question is yes. Now that the state has opened up eligibility to 1B, the city will operationalize the plans with respect to giving additional information about where people will be, you know, with respect to their turn for getting vaccinated and implement that more proactive system to be able to communicate with people once it is their turn to get vaccinated. So that will be announced in the coming days and go live in the coming days. For your second question, yes, this is news that we are learning of as of this morning as well, that people over the age of 65, as well as people with underlying health conditions, should be more rapidly prioritized. That's the new recommendation from the federal government. Overall, yes, I do agree with the recommendation, which gives us more flexibility. Of course, if the state formally adopts that recommendation, because they are... because they are the ultimate decision-maker with respect to prioritization for New York. If they do, the important things for us to continue to monitor is ensuring that the federal government's recommendation is also backed up with a sufficient supply of the vaccine and for us to be able to make it so that we are able to plan week by week vaccinating the highest-risk, highest-priority people and then go along to additional groups. But as a doctor, I have to say it's good news that, that our older New Yorkers, as well as people who are more susceptible to this devastating virus, will be able to get vaccinated more quickly.
Agreed. Thank you so much for answering my questions, and I'll turn it back to my team. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Rivera. I'll turn it over to Chair Levine for questions.
Thank you so much, and thank you, Chair Rivera. Dr. Chakshi, good to see you. And I thank you for your leadership of the agency during this difficult time. And thank you for taking time out to speak to us today. Big picture, how many New Yorkers are currently eligible for vaccination?
Between Phase 1A and Phase 1B, we estimate it's about two million New Yorkers. Not all of, of what is considered Phase 1B has been formally authorized by New York State. So it's likely to be a slightly smaller number than that, but, but two million is the approximation.
Okay, that's a big number. We vaccinated a hundred thousand last week. That's first and second doses. I understand the pace is picking up. But at the current pace, how long will it take to vaccinate all or the majority of those two million New Yorkers?
Yes, well, thank you. And the pace is picking up, particularly now that we have additional flexibility with respect to who is eligible for vaccination. With respect to the pace, as you know, the mayor has set a goal of one million vaccinations by the end of this month, which represents a very significant acceleration in our pace. To get there, we will have to do what you laid out in your opening remarks, which is about four hundred thousand vaccinations a week by the end of, of January. And although it's an aggressive target, based on our planning and all of the work that we've been doing with our healthcare partners, we do believe that we can meet that pace. The other important part of this equation is, of those two million, how many people will choose to get vaccinated? We do know that vaccine hesitancy is a significant concern. And that's why, in addition to everything that we're doing day and night to stand up additional capacity for vaccination, we have to in parallel address New Yorkers' questions and concerns so that as many people who are eligible actually choose to get vaccinated.
Yes, but I want to point out that even the million dose goal of this month, while representing a significant increase in the pace, because that, that counts first and second doses, you're talking about essentially five hundred thousand people, again, compared to two million who are currently eligible. And unfortunately, not all of them will seek to be vaccinated now. But again, even at that pace, which we're not yet on, but we're hoping to reach, this could be two or three months to get through just those who are currently eligible. And now it appears that we may add, for, for very compelling reasons, we may add those who are sixty-five and over and have underlying conditions. I think this is just a sobering reminder of, of how much we need to accelerate this operation. It's, it's, it's got to be bigger, more widespread and round-the-clock, as, as I mentioned earlier, and, and as I know that you acknowledge. So let me just ask in terms of another question on our pace, how many appointments are currently available in the system? How far out do I have to go to schedule an appointment?
Yes, thank you. And I'll, I'll just start on the, on the broader point that you made, if I may, you know, with respect to the pace. And as you know, in our, in our December City Council hearing, we had anticipated that it would take several months, you know, before we would be able to vaccinate members of the general public, you know, likely the middle of 2021, and that it would take until the spring even to get through the initial phase of vaccination. So that has been a part of our planning, based on what we have known about the supply of the vaccine. But to your point, you will find no, no one more motivated than me and the Health Department, and I know my healthcare colleagues, to do this as quickly as possible, because we know how much it will save lives. We know how much it will prevent the suffering that our nurses and doctors continue to see every day in our hospitals. And so there is a profound sense of motivation and urgency to go as quickly as possible. We do, even as we have that laser focus on the pace, we can't forget safety and equity. These are equally important to the pace of vaccination. And the safety is particularly important, you know, these are new vaccines that have been demonstrated to be safe in clinical studies. But people have to learn how to administer them safely. We have to ensure that all of the precautions are being followed. We have to ensure that people are being observed for at least fifteen minutes after receiving the shot. And those are all paramount considerations with respect to safety. And in our pursuit of pace, we also can't leave behind the people who have been hardest hit by the pandemic. And so we have to make sure that we keep our eye on equity as well. And then to your other question, Mr. Chair, with respect to appointments that are available, we do still have several thousand appointments available through the end of this week for eligible populations at city sites. It's, I would estimate on the order of one to three thousand appointments that do remain available. And then we have additional appointments. I believe in the last count that I got, approximately five to ten thousand appointments that are available for next week as well, again, just as city, at city sites. There are likely to be additional appointments available at other sites. And as we get more of a read from the federal government on the supply of vaccine, I anticipate we'll be able to open up additional appointments, particularly for next week onward.
Look, I hope that our next hearing on this topic will be focusing on the supply, not capacity. At the moment, though, it's capacity, which is our bigger challenge. And we just have to, to hold up those appointment numbers against the scale of what is in front of us. And a few thousand appointments, when we have an eligibility group that is two million people, is a pittance. And we, we have got to open more sites. We need more sites that are open twenty-four seven. We need an army of thousands of people who are out there doing this work. And, and I know you share a commitment to that. But it, it sounds like you're, you're, you're planning on opening twelve more Health Department sites, which is good. Is that the extent of your plan, or is that merely the next phase of what will be a larger expansion in Department of Health sites?
Thank you for the question. And, you know, I do want to clarify that the numbers that I mentioned are for available appointments. The total number of appointments is, is significantly larger than that because they have been-
Understood, understood.
And, you know, with respect to, you know, the plans for capacity expansion, I, I will start, and then I'll turn it over to Dr. Wallach to say a little bit more on the health and hospital side. For the Health Department, yes, we launched our three vaccine hubs on Sunday, a really exciting day for us, you know, one that we have been planning for, for months. And it was concomitant with the expansion of eligibility to 1B. And we've served, you know, thousands of people at those vaccine hubs just between Sunday and Monday. As you mentioned, we'll be adding twelve additional hubs starting this Saturday, which will broaden out our capacity much further. And we do have additional plans, whether it involves extending hours or adding additional vaccinating staff, or potentially expanding the number of sites as well to serve as many New Yorkers as we have the, the supply to be able to serve. So that's from the Health Department perspective. I'm sorry, one other thing that I should mention, in addition to our hubs, we do have other Health Department clinics, both turning our sexual health clinics into vaccination sites, which has already occurred. We've set up pop-up sites at multiple locations. Today, the Health Department clinic at 125 Worth Street in Manhattan, which has been operating for over a week, will commence its twenty-four seven operations. And starting Saturday, our clinic in Corona, Queens, will also commence its twenty-four seven operations. So those are some of the ways that we plan to continue expanding capacity. And I'll turn it over to Dr. Wallach for the H and H side.
Great. Thanks, Dr. Chakshi, and good morning, Chair Levine. Thank you for your question. Currently at New York City Health and Hospitals, we have approximately twenty-seven thousand appointments available each week for vaccine, and that number will only continue to increase as we build out capacity. We do open appointments on a two-week rolling basis. So as of this morning, two weeks from now on Tuesday, those appointments open today. As far as our capacity right now, all eleven of our acute facilities offer vaccine, as well as seven of our Gotham sites, which are community health centers, most of which are located in underserved neighborhoods that had a disproportionate effect of the pandemic. So particularly excited to be able to offer vaccine in those areas. In addition, we have been planning since the summer for our infrastructure to be able to supply vaccine. So we are taking advantage of our test and trace pop-up testing site to be able to convert those to vaccine distribution hubs. This past weekend, both our Bathgate and our Brooklyn Army Terminal sites have been converted to vaccine centers. They are open twenty-four hours, seven days a week. And when they are fully ramped up, we'll have the ability at Bathgate to do ten thousand vaccines per week, and a Brooklyn Army Terminal, fifteen thousand per week. In addition, we will use our other existing pop-up sites to add, not take away testing, but add to our testing activities to be able to offer vaccine at those other existing pop-up sites. And we did a dry run, if you will, early in the fall, where we started offering flu vaccine at these sites with the anticipation that we would swap out flu vaccine and replace it with COVID vaccine. So we're familiar with the operation, and our staff were trained to give vaccine. So we are very excited to be able to offer this additional capacity as we move forward. Thank you.
I, I appreciate that, Dr. Wallach. Twenty-seven thousand appointments, again, that's thirteen and a half thousand people, because folks will need two doses ultimately against just a huge population who need to vaccinate. I understand there's other sources of vaccination appointments. And I, my, my, my co-chair Rivera dealt very well with the scheduling problems. But I'll, I'll just say that right now, you have to dive down the rabbit hole for every single provider to find out if there's availability. You don't have to have unified medical records to at least have a clear interface that steers me to where the available appointments are. And, and you've covered that, and so I, I, I actually don't want to, to burn more time on that. I do want to bring up challenges for seniors, though. Seventy-five and older, who are the highest-risk population arguably. There were reports yesterday that some of them had to wait two hours in lines to get vaccinated. I think we've already covered the problems with the website and the short staffing on the call-in. But, and then we have seniors who are homebound. So can we not get door-to-door service for seniors who are homebound? And can we not find a way to, to avoid any circumstance where a senior has to wait in line for two hours because of the risk of COVID spread and other challenges?
Yes, thank you for asking this important question as well. It is something that we, that we are very focused on as well. You know, now that the eligibility has been expanded as of yesterday, you know, I visited one of our vaccine hubs at Hillcrest High School in Queens. And, you know, one of the most heartening things that I saw was how many seniors are starting to get vaccinated there. I met someone who is eighty-nine years old there, who had a wonderful experience at the hub. And reportedly, there was someone who was one hundred and nine years old who came to get vaccinated as well, which is just amazing to reflect on. But yes, we have to ensure that the experience, particularly for, you know, our, our elders, including frail elders, is as easy as possible from the point of scheduling the appointment, you know, with respect to accommodating for the fact that some people won't be able to use the website to schedule the appointment, but would prefer making a phone call to the hotline that we have set up. But also making sure that the, the trusted relationships that older New Yorkers have with their own family doctors, the people who have been taking care of them for years and giving them their flu vaccine each year, know all of the information that they need to help connect their patients with, with a COVID-19 vaccine as well. Beyond the scheduling of an appointment, you are absolutely right. We have to make sure that the experience of getting a vaccination is also easy and easier, you know, with respect to getting to a facility, making sure that they're not waiting in long lines, you know, expediting it so that, you know, seniors, particularly who have limited mobility or find it difficult to, to stand, are pushed to the front of the line so that they can, you know, get their vaccine sooner. And then for people who have particularly limited mobility, to arrange for transportation options for them. And I'll just say one more note, Mr. Chair, on, on your question with respect to, to people who do have limited mobility and, and are, are homebound. You know, there are three ways that we are thinking about and planning for meeting the needs of that population. The first has already commenced, as you know. Many of our New York City elders who are homebound are in nursing homes or assisted living facilities, you know, other long-term care environments. And in those cases, we bring the vaccine to them through the federal program for nursing home vaccination, which is now extended to other adult care facilities as well. The second way is what you have mentioned, which is making sure that we have the right transportation options, whether it's something like Accessa Ride or other ways in which, you know, I know my own patients have navigated to, you know, to my clinic, and making that again, as, as easy a process as possible to arrange for them and potentially to expand that out, which I know our Vaccine Command Center is working on connecting people with rides to be able to get to the vaccination sites that we have set up. The third piece of it is that there are some seniors who are truly homebound for whom even a seamless transportation system may not be able to help them. We are thinking about them and concerned about ensuring that they get vaccinated. I want to acknowledge that there are some real limitations with respect to the stability of the COVID-19 vaccine. Because these are mRNA vaccines, you know, there's a limited ability to transport them without interfering with the actual components of the vaccination. And so it's not as simple as, for example, even having a refrigerated backpack, putting some vaccine doses in it, and just going door-to-door to vaccinate our homebound elders. Unfortunately, that is not workable as of today because of some of those challenges around stability. And the last thing that we would want to do is to give some of our most vulnerable people an ineffective vaccination. So that is something that we will continue to work on with respect to solutions for ensuring that, that those people have access to a vaccination as well.
I appreciate that. Other states are already figuring this out. Rhode Island's doing it with the Moderna vaccine. Obviously, you couldn't do it with the Pfizer vaccine because of the cold storage needs. And at any rate, we hope that Johnson, a Johnson option will be available soon. So not too soon to start planning for that rollout, which will be much easier logistically. But I just want to move on to one final point, so we can pass it on to our colleagues. We cannot forget that we are in the midst of an extraordinary surge in the spread of the coronavirus in New York City today. We're seeing over five thousand cases a day. We have over three thousand of our fellow New Yorkers in hospitals today with COVID. All those numbers are trending up. All those numbers are trending up at an alarming rate. And vaccination, obviously, is the way we're going to stop this pandemic. But we still face enormous risk in the short term, compounded by the risk of the UK variant and other variants that, at this point, we really need to assume are in New York City, though we haven't had confirmation of that, perhaps surprisingly. And so that raises the question of just how many of the test samples that we're gathering in New York City are we sequencing the genome on? Is it possible that we're just missing what could already be a significant presence of one of these more dangerous variants or variants which spread more widely? Could you, could you help us understand that, Dr. Chaski? Just how much are we able to sequence and what is the plan to increase that?
Yes, thanks for this important question as well. And I am sincerely grateful for everything that you've done to communicate to our fellow New Yorkers about the continued danger and urgency of where we are in the pandemic. And, you know, you've been a really excellent partner in communicating that, so thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, we are, as you pointed out, we're at over 5,000 cases a day with respect to our seven-day average of total cases, which is, I think it's easy to become numb to the numbers, but that's an astoundingly high rate of COVID-19 spread in our city right now. In fact, in recent days, there have been single days with over 7,000 cases diagnosed in a 24-hour period. And so we have to maintain our vigilance and our discipline. And you're right, I am worried about the presence of these new variants, not just the UK variant that you mentioned, but there's also a South African variant that are more transmissible. And so this dials up, you know, our sense of concern and urgency as well. We do have a genetic sequencing program in New York City through our public health laboratory that has sequenced thousands of specimens over the course of the pandemic. We have ramped up those efforts with respect to ensuring that more are sequenced each week. And we're working with our colleagues at New York State at the Wadsworth Public Health Laboratory, who also have sequencing capacity to ensure that we're doing those special tests on as many of the samples that we collect as possible. We have not yet detected those variants, but I believe I would support your statement, which is that, given the spread that we've seen in the rest of the country and around the world, it is very likely that that variant exists in New York City already. And that's why we have to double down on the public health precautions that we've talked about.
Yes, we have an incredibly advanced public health lab, one of the best in the world. And we know that sequencing the genome of any sample is not a trivial undertaking. But when you say that we've sequenced several thousand samples, that has to be compared against what, I think, maybe over a million tests over the course of the pandemic in New York City. I'm not sure what the total number is. But I guess the question is, on any given day or week, are we sequencing one of the thousand samples taken, one in two, 3,000? Can you give us a sense of the scale relative to how many tests are coming in?
I don't have those precise numbers offhand, but that is something that we can certainly follow up on. I'll point out that in addition to our public health laboratory, there are ongoing efforts through the new pandemic response lab to increase our sequencing capacity. And we have access to a database known as GIS AID, where our academic partners who do those same special genetic tests also upload their findings as well. So those are all, you know, closely coordinated efforts to be able to take advantage of all of the sequencing capacity that exists in the city and the state.
Okay, I'm done on this round, and I'm sorry to add to your to-do list. But I'm afraid that we also need to push to significantly increase the portion of test samples that we're sequencing genes on. The reason why the UK caught this early, in part, is because they are able to sequence far, a far greater proportion of their test samples than we are in the US in general and New York City specifically. There's already been, as of yesterday, 63 confirmed cases of the variant in continental United States. This is a connected city. We have to assume it's here. And we're going to need to know as soon as possible in order to track this and battle this new threat. So thank you, Commissioner, and thank you to your team for answering these questions. I'm going to now acknowledge that we've had some additional colleagues join us, including Council members Ampree Samuel, Diaz, Reynoso, and Rosenthal. And I'm going to pass it back to, oh, sorry, Councilmember Barron, forgive me if I didn't acknowledge you. Great to have you here as well. And I'm going to pass it back to our committee counsel to queue the council members for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I'm now going to be calling on council members in the order in which they've used a Zoom raise hand function. As a reminder, council members, if you would like to ask a question and you have not yet used a Zoom raise hand function, please do so now. Councilmembers, please keep your questions to five minutes. The sergeant-at-arms will keep a timer, and we will let you know when your time is up. You should begin once I have called on you and the sergeant has announced that you may begin. In order, I will be calling on council members Lander, followed by Powers, Councilmember Menchaca, Councilmember Adams, Councilmember Koo, Councilmember Moya, Councilmember Reynoso, Councilmember Holden, Councilmember Barron, and Councilmember Tin. Councilmember Lander, you may begin when you are ready.
Thank you so much.
Time starts now.
Thank you so much, and a big thanks to Chairs Rivera and Levine for convening this hearing and setting the sense of urgency that we must have. And this is really a shared responsibility. We all have that, and I appreciate, Dr. Chokshi, that you got on the phone with us last week and conveyed it. And, Dr. Wallach, I'll say, I went on Sunday to visit the new 24/7 hub at the Brooklyn Army Terminal, where I've been a number of times to get tested and was really encouraged to see it up and running. So thank you for what you're doing and for answering our questions. We have the sense of urgency that we know you have as well. All right, so my first question, it's great that that's a 24/7 hub and that we're standing up more 24/7 hubs. Don't the subways need to be open 24/7 so all New Yorkers could get to them? I understand you don't run the subways, but isn't it your public health recommendation that we should open the subways 24/7 so all New Yorkers could get to these sites?
You're right, I do not run the subways. You know, what we found is that people are taking those 24/7 slots as we make them available. And as with everything, we want to make sure that people have, you know, as many transportation options as possible, knowing that some people only have public transportation accessible to them.
Thank you, and I assume you've read the same subway studies and data that I have. It does not look like there is a good public health reason to me to keep the subways closed overnight. Do you see something that I don't?
I do not, I'm not familiar with the precise studies that you're talking about. But, but yes, it is true that the possibility of contact-based transmission is lower than what we had thought earlier in the pandemic.
Okay, thank you. And I'll just say to the chairs, I hope we can pick this up together. It's time to reopen the subways 24/7 for this reason and for others. I think at the beginning, we thought that that cleaning might be necessary. It's pretty clear now that we can keep the subways safe and open 24/7, and we need to. I have heard from some people who call and can't get an appointment. Actually, I heard from someone this morning trying to get his 88-year-old mother an appointment, who was like on the phone for 40 minutes, and then there weren't appointments available. Is there any way to have a system where if somebody reaches out and there aren't appointments available at the sites that makes sense for them, they could get a call back? They don't just have to, like, keep calling and keep calling so they can find an appointment once they reach out and don't have to keep reaching out?
The short answer is yes. And, you know, that is either operationalized or in the process of being operationalized, both for the website as well as for the call center. I do want to clarify that there are appointments available currently. It may be for next week rather than this week, but there are currently appointments available.
That's great, and obviously, there may be location mismatches. But it sounds like you're saying that's not yet available, but you're working to make it available. So if you initiate on the website or the phone and you can't match at that moment, you'll be contacted when there is availability.
That's correct.
Are we planning to do proactive phone or other outreach to seniors especially, but I guess to all eligible New Yorkers, you know, letting them come to us? For now, we don't have the infrastructure to meet all the demand we have that way. But we obviously need to start outreach. So are we going to start calling every New Yorker that's over 75 and in these other categories to ask them to get vaccinated?
Yes, we are. That will be a combination of direct mail outreach, phone calls, working with partners, whether they're community-based organizations or, you know, particularly for our seniors through the Department for the Aging, where they have, you know, many established networks and partnerships. And the Vaccine Command Center is coordinating that across city agencies to ensure that it's done as seamlessly as possible. So yes, that is.
That's great, it's good to hear. I can't tell you how many people have reached out to ask, is there some way I could help? So I don't know if you're thinking about volunteers who could start with an initial script and pass someone off if more information is needed. But New Yorkers are so eager to help get this done. And I think something like onboarding people to volunteer to make initial calls to folks who are 75. We've been doing that in our community through a great thing called the Neighbor Network, so we'd love to help. And I guess my last question, I know you spoke about the groups that have already been part of the test and trace system, but the census outreach that New York City did was an extraordinary outreach to a much wider range of communities, and I think with great cultural competence. Could we use that census outreach network?
Time expired.
Part of the vaccination process?
Yes.
Sorry, Commissioner.
No, please, go ahead, Dr. Eastphilling, go ahead.
Thank you, Councilmember Lander. Absolutely, the network that was leveraged for Census 2020 has also supported our test and trace operations, canvassing, door-knocking, doing lots of outreach at our mobile sites. And so we are already exploring with our test and trace colleagues how we can leverage the same network for our vaccination efforts as well. We're already starting with our Vax 101, sort of making sure that they have the information. And then we're going to roll into our train, the trainer operation. So we totally agree, and that's certainly a direction that we are heading to.
Thank you very much for the time.
Thank you, Councilmember. I'd just like to note for the record that some council members are, do not have the raise hand functionality, but we are including them in the queue for questions. If any other council members having technical difficulties, please communicate this to the staff contact for the hearing. Next, we will be turning to Councilmember Powers for questions, followed by Councilmember Menchaca, followed by Councilmember Adams. Councilmember Powers, you may begin when you are ready.
Time starts now.
Thank you, thank you for the testimony and answering the questions, thank you to the chairs. Just, I wanted to just go back to the news today that the governor had discussed about 75, 65 and up. Can you just talk to us more about what you think, see the challenges are ahead on that? Obviously, it's a massive increase to the population here. But logistically, for you, what are the challenges you see ahead for decreasing the population or increasing, expanding the population eligible?
Yes, thank you. And so, you know, the federal government made the announcement this morning about the recommendation for states to more rapidly expand eligibility, as you mentioned, to those 65 years and older, as well as those with underlying health conditions. This does expand, you know, the population of people who would be eligible. You know, I want to clarify again that the state has to make that ultimate determination with respect to eligibility. If they do do, if they do choose to do it more rapidly, the major issues from our perspective will be ensuring that we have a sufficient supply of the vaccine from the federal government to be able to meet that additional demand and for us to continue standing up additional capacity for vaccination in New York City, both through our own city sites as well as with other partners, particularly pharmacies and doctors' offices.
And I assume there's going to be some individuals who just became eligible for it, starting yesterday, who are now not going to have access to it, who will feel, or will, you know, there'll be a dwindling supply available, who may feel somewhat frustration around it. Just in terms of how we're vaccinating right now, and I, this question has been bugging me, so I wanted to ask just you while I have you here. When, with the dosages that we have, are we splitting those in half? And like, the amount of doses we're getting out of per week, that is just shots, right? That's on individuals, meaning we're not taking two and setting them, one, setting them aside for an individual. You theoretically could get your first shot without knowing whether your second shot is available?
It's a, there are some nuances here. So basically, the federal government does set aside doses in the way that you're describing. So for any allocation that New York City gets, let's say, the first week, you know, December 14th, there was an allocation of second doses set aside by the federal government that are delivered either three or four weeks later, depending on whether it's the Pfizer vaccine or the Moderna vaccine. There may be some changes to the federal policy landscape around this as well, where those set-asides are no longer set aside and actually are all delivered to states and municipalities with the idea that manufacturing of the vaccine will have to ramp up to be able to have enough vaccine to give those second doses on the right schedule.
I saw like Toronto, I think, or somewhere in Ontario, I think, is doing that. But also, the efficacy of the first shot seems to be somewhat high. And I, the second question I have on that same topic is, do you need to go to the same provider to get your first and second shot?
Very good questions. The first thing that I want to clarify is that we don't know the precise efficacy of a single-dose regimen. And so, you know, our medical recommendation continues to be that everyone should get those two doses in the interval that is specified because that's what's authorized by the FDA as safe and gets to those 94% plus levels of effectiveness. It's very important for us to make sure that that is a clear message to the public. And then with respect to your question, yes, you know, the default pathway for any New Yorker who's getting their first dose is to go back to the same place either three or four weeks later to get their second dose. That makes it easier for the person, it makes it easier to plan from the site perspective. There may be some, you know, individual instances where that is harder to do for some reason. And, you know, there will be ways to accommodate that. But for the vast majority of New Yorkers, that will be the right way to get the second dose.
Got it, okay. And my last, I have just a couple of last questions here. One is, the, when, when do we, or how are we going to be vaccinating folks who are eligible in homeless shelters? What are going, is there going to be an ongoing plan to get, when we talk about the jails? I know they set up a site today at Rikers Island for the staff, but are they going to have like an ongoing process? Because there's, you know, there is a population that.
Time expired.
That goes out. And third, I just wanted to ask a question about refusals, because that seems to be such a big part of this. And I think particularly around, as I look at some numbers like H and H, for instance, which had a low, seemed to have a low vaccination rate. My guess was that there was a high refusal rate of staff there. I've also heard from staff at hospitals about, about high refusals. So can you, so homeless shelters, how are you going to get enough doses ongoing for people who are incarcerated? And then third is, can you just talk to us about refusal rates going on anywhere? I said H and H, but it could be anywhere. And what are we, like, what are you hearing, you know, both anecdotally in the field about people's concerns? If there's any data on who's refusing those types of things? Because that is, to me, such an important but undiscussed part of this equation.
Thanks for several important questions. Briefly, you know, again, I'm heartened as a doctor that we will be able to vaccinate people who are experiencing homelessness as well as people who take care of, of people who are experiencing homelessness. The state did open up eligibility for that population as of yesterday. And we're very actively working with our colleagues at the Department of Homeless Services to operationalize a plan in the coming days to get all of that eligible population vaccinated. With respect to people who are incarcerated, you know, as soon as that eligibility determination is made by the state, we do have a good system in place through our Correctional Health Services. we do have a good system in place through our Correctional Health Services that's under the Health and Hospitals banner, you know, to be able to to get those New Yorkers vaccinated as well. And then finally, you know, with respect to vaccine hesitancy, I would just think about it maybe a bit differently with respect to vaccines and uptake in the sense that what we're seeing in the early weeks of the vaccination campaign is that people may not be ready to get it the very first day that it's available to them. But that doesn't mean that they're refusing the vaccine. They may just need a little bit more time and talk to their colleagues, you know, who are getting it, talk to family members, and then eventually get it themselves. So I do expect, even for healthcare workers and, you know, many others who are already eligible, that those rates will continue to go up. But that's why we've got to do all those things that I mentioned with respect to addressing vaccine hesitancy as well.
Well, just to ask the last question here, let's just actually play this out. What is the refusal rate right now? And I'm sorry, I'm using refusal. Well, let's not say refusal. What is the acceptance rate right now of eligible? Let's say, let's just take our city hospitals, of our eligible individuals that could get it versus those who have actually taken the first, at least the first shot?
I'll pass that question to Dr. Wallach.
Great, thank you. And I would say thank you, Councilmember Powers. In New York City Health and Hospitals, our best guess, based on conversations with our staff, is that about thirty percent are currently vaccine hesitant. And Dr. Choxey's point are waiting to see how others do. And so therefore, from our perspective, the most important thing that we can do is make sure that our staff members have all the education about the vaccine, its safety, its efficacy, and to make sure that we're out there getting this message and sharing stories of people who have gotten vaccinated and have done very well. And in particular, I am most proud that our senior leadership, both at Central Office, as well as at our local facilities, are not only hosting town halls and meetings to discuss this, but are actually out walking the front lines, talking with staff in their units, in the hallways, answering questions and modeling behavior. So we really, it takes a multi-pronged approach. But our goal is to make sure that all of our staff are well informed and that they all know that they are, have accessibility to the vaccine now.
Yes, thank you. Thanks, Spencer.
Thank you, Councilmember. Next, we will be hearing from Councilmember Manchaca, followed by Councilmember Adams, followed by Councilmember Koo. Councilmember Manchaca, you may begin when you are ready.
Time starts now. Thank you. Thank you to the chairs for their incredible work on this. And I've been following them both on Twitter. I'm hoping we can have more discussions and briefings at the council level to continue to engage with our communities and our own town halls. But I'm incredibly thankful to them. I have a question to the Department of Health. Our staff just called this morning to to engage with some constituents who had issues. Right now, there are only English and Spanish versions of the line, of the vaccine line. When will you increase to other languages? And it's just, it continues to boggle my mind why this continues to be an issue for the administration. There's just no commitment to language access. It just, it's an afterthought. And so it'd be great just to understand what the issues are, because I'm kind of left to my own devices to to try to guess why this is so hard for this administration.
Yes, I'll, I'll add, thank you so much, Councilmember. I know that we have really worked on our sites to make sure that we have working with contracted vendors. So we are offering languages beyond just English and Spanish. I think as we are ramping up our scheduled call line, I do think that we will really work to include other languages. I know that we have access to our language line, as does our colleagues at Health and Hospitals. But, you know, we'll make sure to get back to you on the details for our next steps. But I do know that this is important for us, specifically as we ensure that we are connecting individuals to access the vaccine.
Okay, again, these are, these are, this is the same response that we get every time when we're doing any kind of piece of the rollout of COVID. It's not only disappointing, it's incredibly dangerous. People are not connecting. And what we're not doing is building trust with communities who need to really understand the messages. So it's just, it's just hard to, it's hard to sit here and take that. I wanted to bring something up that Chair Levine actually has been really focused on, that include door knocking in places like Rhode Island, that really kind of bring an engagement component to the outreach for providing vaccines. There again, we need people who are, who are trained, who can culturally access communities that are not English speaking or Spanish speaking in our communities. What, what kind of work do you have going in that, in that vein?
Just to clarify, Councilmember, specifically around door knocking?
Door knocking.
Yes. Great. Thank you for the question. And certainly, I think that this is so important. We've leveraged, you know, our canvassers, our community based organizations. As we were, you know, rolling out our testing operations in communities to do door knocking as well. And certainly, our direction is that we want to continue those operations as we are informing individuals about access points for the vaccine. I certainly think that we have to be mindful of the moment that we're in. Certainly, this is a very hopeful and optimistic moment of having access to the vaccine. But as, as you know very well, we are certainly seeing cases rise, and we are being mindful about how we're deploying our staff. We have several groups that we have deployed in our priority neighborhoods, and they have participated in door knocking. We are also partnering with our colleagues at New York City Housing Authority to think about our outreach strategy as well. But I do think that this is something we will be activating version.
Okay, I have two last questions. And one of them is, I'm going to need you to give me a timeline for the, of the language access. I'm going to need you to pin down a timeline and when we can, we can get that. This is, this is key. We don't get to the the million without, without this. This is really, really critical. And then the the last question I'd like to ask is really connected to the idea that essentially, we're all waiting for access to to this vaccine. When, when are we going to get to the point where a kind of CVS operation will have a plethora of vaccines so that people will be able to access it, like they access the flu vaccine? How quickly do you think that?
Time expired.
Because I think we're going to get to a point where the the private sector is going to, is going to have a better system to get this stuff out. And the only question we're going to be left with is the question I'm trying to dig to, which is, how are we going to get everyone convinced that this is good for them? And that really, really penetrate the, the distrust with this vaccine, the process, the fact that government doesn't speak to them. It's not for them. This is the same stuff that we hit when we approached the census conversation. It was a long time before we really got people interested in something that they thought was, was not, not just for them, but dangerous to them in some way. We learned a lot from that. And and so I'm just not seeing that kind of response. So I'm hoping you can kind of talk, talk a little bit about the, the private sector coming in to, to give us full access to, to the vaccine.
Yes. Well, thank you very much. On the first question, our team will, will follow up, you know, with respect to the specific timeline. And and we've heard your, your urgency and share it as well. And thank you for the very thoughtful second question as well. You know, this is a core part of our vaccination planning that has happened over several months is making sure that we're leveraging the existing infrastructure for what I think of as the everyday miracle of routine vaccination. You know, it, it just happens in a way that we almost take for granted in the modern world that, you know, four million New Yorkers get vaccinated against the flu over the course of of several months. And so we do want to make sure that we're taking full advantage of, of that existing infrastructure. In many ways, it has already begun, you know, moving from hospitals to community health centers to urgent care clinics in a very limited way. Pharmacies will, will start, you know, in the coming days administering vaccinations as well. But we want to, by the end of the month, bring many more pharmacies online to help with that administration now that eligibility has been expanded more broadly as we've spoke, as we've spoken about. I want to point out one important thing, which is, it's not just the chain pharmacies, you know, the CBS, the Walgreens, the RiteAids, but independent pharmacies as well, which are the linchpin of how so much healthcare actually gets delivered in communities in New York City, and particularly in communities of color. And so that's something that Dr. Easterling and the team have really been planning for as well. And when we do have additional supply of vaccine, to be able to expand the footprint further, we will take steps to do that.
Thank you both for your time. Thank you, Chairs.
Thank you, Councilmember. Next, we will be hearing from Councilmember Adams. Councilmember Adams will be reading a statement on behalf of the Council's Black, Latino and Asian Caucus prior to asking her questions. Sergeants, please do not start the time until after Councilmember Adams has completed the statement. Thank you.
Thank you so much and good morning. Thank you to Chairs Levine and Rivera for having this very, very important hearing this morning on such a critical topic right now. And thank you for your latitude in allowing me to read the statement as co-chair of the Black, Latino and Asian Caucus of the City Council before I give just a couple of questions. The Black, Latino and Asian Caucus recently joined Brooklyn Borough President Eric Adams and our co-chair, I. Danique Miller, in supporting their soon to be introduced resolution, calling for improved state and city coordination in distributing and administering COVID nineteen vaccines, prioritizing vaccinations for essential workers, especially home healthcare, food delivery, supermarket and transit workers, immigrants and other high risk populations in our hardest hit communities of color, and the creation of a system to track vaccine distribution in real time with racial demographic data to ensure that our communities are being inoculated at the front end of the process. One of the most painful lessons drawn from this crisis was that a failure to provide timely reporting of racial demographic data at the onset of the pandemic resulted in a disproportionate number of dead black and brown New Yorkers that otherwise could have resulted in more aggressive mitigation measures employed in these communities today. As the citywide number of cases, hospitalizations and deaths continue to creep upward, our communities represent a considerable percentage of the zip codes with coronavirus positivity rates above seven percent. And new reports indicate that South Asians and Chinese New Yorkers are no less acutely affected with respect to positivity and mortality rates. If the federal government can establish a system that integrates key logistical aspects for delivering and administering vaccines and products to facilitate vaccinations, surely our city and state can do the same. But such a system must be accompanied by a prompt disclosure of racial demographic data to help prevent the further loss of life and ensure that our historically neglected communities receive the desperately needed relief these vaccines provide. I thank you for allowing me to read that statement. I represent District twenty eight in Queens. Within District twenty eight in Queens is Richmond Hill. Richmond Hill right now, the zip codes of one one four one nine and one one four two zero represent the highest positivity rate of COVID nineteen in the city of New York, over sixteen percent in fact. My office is inundated with phone calls right now from my constituents wondering what they can do to protect themselves by way of vaccination. We know that communities of color experienced the highest death rate during the onset of COVID nineteen. I take this, this conversation seriously because my family was affected and I lost my father in May. So how do I answer my constituents' questions when they continue to call my office and ask for their representative? Who is their voice in this community? Why they are not prioritized in a hot zone, one of the hottest zones in the city? Why they are feel fearful right now of losing their lives? Why families consider, can continue to live in fear in New York City where vaccines are available? Why are they not prioritized? And why are we doomed to repeat the same number of deaths in communities of color with no access to the vaccine that may save their lives?
Councilmember Adams, I truly want to thank you for the statement from the Black, Latino, Asian Caucus. I think it's very important to continue to elevate what we know to be true. We know that black and Latino communities bore the brunt of of this COVID nineteen pandemic. And the data was very clear during wave one. And as you laid out, we continue to see cases go up. And we continue to see the disproportionate impact even today. And that point certainly has not been lost on me as a provider, as a black man, certainly my colleagues, both at the Department of Health and in the city administration. And we are working to continue to center our priority neighborhoods. As I mentioned earlier, with our racial inclusion and equity task force, which was stood up in June, we certainly looked at that data. And now that we have more data looking at not only COVID nineteen data, but also being able to really understand, you know, some of the inequity that really contributed to high exposure, thinking about overcrowdy, overcrowding in housing, multi-generational homes, also thinking about, you know, being a frontline worker and really being able to map to those neighborhoods. And that has really allowed us to tailor our resources. We've done that with our COVID nineteen testing, with our reach and our engagement. And certainly, we're thinking about this as the vaccine distribution plan rolls out. But here's where we are, because we do have to keep in mind that we're, we're following the federal and state guidelines as it relates to eligibility criteria. And certainly, equity and ethical principles being taken into consideration, thinking about the categories that have borne the brunt and we want to save lives, but also those categories where we want to continue to preserve functions and ensure
Dr. Eastphaline, I, I don't mean to cut you off, but my time is running short. And you're going to be able to finish your statement, but my time's going to run out. So I just make sure that I get this out as well, and then you can continue. I understand that. And what I'm hearing is that we're thinking about, we're thinking about, and we're planning. People are dying in my, in my, in my district right now. There are multiple websites which are causing massive confusion amongst the residents of District twenty eight. And I'm speaking primarily right now about Richmond Hill and South Thoseon Park. Residents don't know what to believe and who to believe when it comes to these websites. And I've listened to Dr. Choxey this morning speak about the necessity to having these multiple websites. But I tell you, and I will also echo the sentiments of my colleague Carlos Manchaca, who just spoke, with the language barrier and with there not being any, any system for languages in the most diverse place in the world. And right now, looking at this incredible spike, we are doing an incredible disservice to our citizens across the board in communities of color. Those citizens that do have language barriers, that do not speak English, do not speak Spanish, but speak a plethora of other languages right now, along with the fact that they are not prioritized in the healing process by vaccine and the accessibility right now. And we have no answer for them. So I wanted to make sure that I am on record in stating that I am disappointed in the fact that this city allowed so much death in black and brown communities in the onset of COVID. And I am even more upset that now we have vaccine and we are not prioritizing those who are dying at the highest rate in the city of New York. I thank you for your time.
Well, thank you, Councilmember Adams. I'll just briefly. Well, thank you, Councilmember Adams. I'll just briefly, you know, respond to say we, we really share your sense of urgency, your, your passion. I am again grateful to you for, for sharing your, your family's powerful story and reflecting on the, you know, the deep grief that I know that has befallen too many families in New York City. And I, I understand. And we have to ensure that we turn that into our motivation to better serve people today as well as going forward. You know, with respect to the, to the language point, I do want to, you know, make sure to mention that we have information, you know, trusted information, vetted, science-based information that has been made available in multiple languages, all of it in 13 languages and parts of it in an even greater number of languages. And we hope that it's not just us and the city, although of course we recognize our fundamental role, but it is trusted messengers like all of you, like faith leaders, like community organizers who are carrying that information forward to make sure that the people who are most in need of it hear about it from someone whom they trust.
Thank you, Councilmember. Next, we will be hearing from Councilmember Koo, followed by Councilmember Holden. Councilmember Koo, you may begin when you are ready.
Time starts now.
Hi, Commissioner, and thank you, our Chairs, for hosting today's event. Can you hear me? Yeah, I am mute myself. Hello?
We can hear you.
Okay, good, good. So I just, I follow Councilmember Adams. She has the highest COVID-19 infection rate. And I have the same feeling. And we have the second necessary, no, in 11555. And I believe my district has the second highest death rate in the city according to the New York City data. So my question is, no, the vaccination hubs, you don't have it in all parks of Queens, especially in the eastern part of my district, fresh metals. They have zero sites for vaccination. So have you considered adding sites over there?
Yes, thank you very much for the question. And, you know, we are very active in making sure that there are both sufficient number of sites across New York City as well as sites located in, you know, our hardest-hit communities. We do, in addition to the hub that already launched at Hillcrest High School in Queens that I mentioned, on Sunday, there are three additional hubs across all of Queens that will be launching this Saturday. Again, that's in addition to the Health and Hospitals points of access that we have, both at Queens Hospital Center as well as Elmhurst Hospital in Queens. And then the, the colleagues that we have in the existing healthcare infrastructure who are located on nyc.gov/vaccinefinder, where you'll see additional locations for vaccination in Queens as well.
So on your, on your vaccine, NYC COVID-19 Vaccine Finder, there's a list of like many, many providers, even Costco is listed there, and many private doctors' offices, CVS is listed there. So my question is, can anyone go to a private doctor's office to get vaccination even though they are not patients there? Do you have to be a patient in the office to get vaccinated? Or anyone, yeah, anyone who have fulfilled the eligibility requirement can go? I mean, of course, they make appointments.
Yes, exactly. And thank you for the important question. For those sites that are listed on the Vaccine Finder, they have agreed to take all eligible patients for appointments there. So we encourage you to, you know, to have your constituents call any one of those sites or make an appointment through the websites that are linked there.
So they cannot refuse, right? Oh, you're not my patient, no. We are fully booked already, no.
It does depend on their having a sufficient supply of the vaccine, of course, and an available appointment. But to be listed in the Vaccine Finder, you know, they, they have agreed to take all eligible patients. I should make one clarification on this point, which is my understanding of the state requirements is that pharmacies, at least in this initial stage, are only to serve people who are 75 years or older. And we'll see how the state requirements evolve on that. But certainly for the city sites and the other sites that are located on the Vaccine Finder, if one is eligible, then an appointment would be possible to make if they have availability as well as supply of the vaccine.
So the vaccine is free, but who pays for the administration cost? Can they charge you for, because they have to spend time and a doctor or nurse have administered the vaccine? How do they pay for it? The city pay for them or the federal government pay for them?
The most important thing is that you're right, the vaccine is free for the person receiving the vaccine. If that person has health insurance, then the, the health insurance may be charged for that type of administration fee that you described. And the federal government has, has stated that it will ensure that the vaccine is delivered free of charge to anyone who wants it.
Time expired.
I should also, you know, clarify importantly that if someone is uninsured, that is not a barrier. They can still receive a free vaccine, and that includes undocumented New Yorkers as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Next, we will turn to Councilmember Holden, followed by Councilmember Barron. Councilmember Holden, you may begin when you are ready.
Time starts now.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairs, and thank you, Dr. Chocksky. You, you heard a lot of complaints today from the council members and the chairs about the seniors, because we're all getting complaints from, in our districts. And, you know, I guess, you know, I heard that you have a Vaccine Finder, but why isn't there like one portal where vaccination centers with available appointments closest to the person? Why can't they be identified and appointments made? Just like, you know, other companies have websites where they find, or let's say airlines, you can get the next available flight and, you know, it's very, it's very, it's a one-stop shopping, let's say. So I guess my question is, are we using all the tools and methods of, you know, of service available in the, in city government to streamline the process and make scheduling appointments easier?
Yes, I thank you for this important question. And, and we do, we do want to make this as easy and seamless as possible and will strive to continuously improve, you know, so that we meet that with respect to everyone's experience. The, the tools that we have available are the Vaccine Finder that you mentioned, which is a way for someone to be able to see the, the places that are offering appointments close to them. And if someone has limited internet access or limited, you know, proficiency with the internet, the, the call center is the other option where someone will be able to walk them through the options that are available to them. And both of those will continue to be improved and, you know, refined in the coming days.
So, so you've tapped into the talents of the Mayor's Office of Economic Opportunities, Civic Service Design Studio, or the New York City Chief Technology Officer's Digital Services Unit, DOIT, New York City Planning Labs, and the Mayor's Office of Data Analytics, the MODA. You, you, you tapped into all of that, right?
Yes, I'm, I'm very impressed by your, your knowledge of all of the technology and data resources.
Technology Chair, I should know that. Go ahead.
And the short, the short answer is yes. Through the Vaccine Command Center, all of those resources are being leveraged and, and brought to bear in support of this effort. You know, our vaccination campaign is an all-hands-on-deck effort. And the mayor has charged us to use every resource at the city's disposal to be able to meet this need.
Okay, just one other point, which is already made by some council members. But getting back to the seniors, I have one of the largest senior populations of any district in the city of New York. And so that's going to be a challenge to get the seniors, the shut-ins and so forth. But as with the COVID testing, I had no COVID testing sites. I had, I had to almost beg for two days of testing. I have one of the largest, and we've been consistently, at first, we were in the yellow zone in my district. And then we, we're still in double figures on COVID-related cases and the COVID virus, obviously. Yet I don't have vaccination centers either now. And with a high senior population, that's a problem. So if you can, when you could roll out, let's say, the, the drugstore chains or, or who are an independence, that would be a tremendous, tremendous help to my district and to many districts with high senior population. And just one other thing that I'd like to mention about the, we've gotten complaints from the EMS, EMT workers that in getting the vaccinations, I think at one point, might have been a few days ago, only 30% of that population had been vaccinated. Do you have any updated figures with the EMS, the frontline workers?
I don't have a precise figure on EMS workers, although that is something that, you know, we can, we can see the data that we have on it in terms of communicating it to your office. I do know that more and more emergency medical services workers have come to get vaccinated in recent days. As you know, you know, the eligibility for that just opened up last week. And so it will take a little bit more time for everyone who's in that category to get vaccinated.
Are the EMS workers being offered vaccinations while on the job instead of on their personal time?
Yes, that's my understanding, certainly for city emergency medical services workers, you know, associated with the fire department or with other branches of city government, that is available to them on.
So you're saying that EMS, EMT workers can get it on the job during their work time, the vaccination?
Yes, that is my understanding.
That's not what I was told. So if you can just check that, all right?
I understand. We can follow up on that.
Thank you, Doctor, because that's, that's a very, very important aspect, that they should be offered on the job. They should have then, like, let's say, a parking lot where we can, with tents, and they can go in, pull in with their, their vehicle, and then set aside for maybe 30 minutes, whatever it takes to just see if there's a reaction. But it should be on the job. And hopefully that you can make that happen if it's not happening yet. Thank you, Chairs.
Thank you, Councilmember. Next, we will be hearing from Councilmember Barron, followed by Councilmember Chin. Councilmember Barron, you may begin when you are ready.
Time starts now.
Thank you. Good morning. Thank you to the Chairs for holding this very important hearing. And also want to thank the Chairs for the leadership that they have demonstrated. I know that the reality of getting to the 24/7 condition for vaccination was very much pushed by the Chairs, and I want to thank you for making that very important move. In terms of the panel that's here, thank you for coming. And I just want to say, nothing exists in a vacuum. And you're talking about vaccine hesitancy. And I just want to remind everybody that these are people who oftentimes remember the very documented history of events in which we were as Black people subjected to merciless persecution. We can talk about Dr. Marion Sims. We can talk about the Trail of Tears, where Native Americans were given blankets that were infected with smallpox. We can talk about the number of women, particularly in the South, who were subjected to hysterectomies and sterilization unnecessarily. And we can talk about the Tuskegee Institute, and we can talk about Harriet Lacks. So for some of those who are reluctant to get the vaccination, there's justice and basis for that reluctance. As we talk about the inequitable or inappropriate response to the outbreak, some people may say, well, the things that you cited, that, that was historical, that's in the past. We can bring it right to today. When this outbreak occurred, the Black community, which was known to have the highest incidence of cases and of death, did not receive the appropriate resources that they needed. The governor saw a fit to have a field hospital in Manhattan to bring the ship to the, to the Manhattan West Side and to provide those kinds of resources to the white community, the community of privilege. So there are many reasons why people are reluctant, hesitant to get this vaccine. As we're now talking about the vaccination process, my understanding is that the trial population was about 9% Black. So I don't know that that reflects, or that's appropriately a reflection of the approximately 13% to 15% of the Black population of the United States. So we're asking that people, we're saying that people need to understand that there are those kinds of understandings about what has happened both historically and in the present day. We also remember that as the council members, the Black, Latino and Asian Caucus had calls with the mayor, we had to fight and fight and fight and push to understand, to have him to understand that the response at that point was inappropriate. I'm hearing now also that the sites that are being opened are not necessarily in those communities that need them the most. My zip code of 11239, all of which is encompassed in my district, had the highest mortality rate in all of New York City. There is a management company in that zip code that has made an offer to have their location serve as a vaccination site. When we were doing the testing sites, it took weeks and weeks of my fighting, along with my husband, the assembly member, to get sites established during that time. What is the process for those people who do want to take the vaccine? What is the process for establishing a site when there's an entity well-established, well-known that wants to be a site and has made that and extended that offer? What is that process?
Well, first, let me just thank you for your, for your very powerful words about the intersection of historical injustice with what we have seen during the COVID-19 pandemic. And I appreciate your, your leadership and, you know, how you're speaking to that. With respect to, to the sites, I'll start briefly. I'll turn it to my colleague, Dr. Easterling, as well. We are looking, you know, specifically at the priority neighborhoods that have been identified with respect to where, for example, we have started, the Health Department vaccine hubs, as well as additional city sites. And if there are specific sites that you have in mind, the Vaccine Command Center, you know, can, can work with you to make sure that, that that is appropriately considered. Dr. Easterling, is there anything that you want to add to that?
Yeah, I also want to just thank Councilmember Barron for your comments and always for your partnership. Where, you know, as the Commissioner mentioned, we are continuing to look at additional sites within our priority neighborhoods. I was just at the East New York Gotham Health Treatment Center to get tested on Saturday. I also know that they're offering vaccinations to priority eligible groups. And also, as the Commissioner mentioned, we are exploring other sites. So we'll be reaching out to your office to get more information about the site that you're referring to.
Okay, I'm available as soon as the hearing's over. Thank you. Thank you to the Chairs.
Thank you, Councilmember. Next, we will be turning to Councilmember Chin, followed by Councilmember Rosenthal. Councilmember Chin, you may begin when you are ready.
Time starts now.
Thank you. Thank you to the Chairs for hosting this important hearing and, and thank you to the Commissioners. My question is that I chair the Committee on Aging. My question is that I chair the Committee on Aging at the City Council. So the concern for the seniors are very, very important. And the calls that we've been getting in our office are from seniors asking, you know, when is their turn and where can they go to get the vaccine? And my question is that, you know, there should have been, you know, more preparation because like for Commissioner, you were talking about the vaccine stability. So going door to door might not be feasible, but we know where all the senior buildings are. I mean, that's a good starting point to be able to provide, you know, a whole building of seniors at once. And then also, we have a whole network of, you know, over two hundred, almost close to three hundred senior center site that could be utilized as testing sites, as also as vaccination site. So the providers are ready to help. I mean, that's the same problem that we have encountered on the whole, you know, food delivery, you know, during this whole pandemic. And they have all the phone numbers, they have all the datas about the age of the seniors who have, you know, chronic illness. So the seniors are waiting because they've heard that right now the priority is seniors who are over seventy-five. And seniors who are under seventy-five are waiting, well, when is their turn? So I think utilizing the existing network that we have is very, very critical. And I just want to make sure that the city is doing that coordination with the Department for the Aging. And it should not be doing it now. It should have been done, you know, way back when we know that we were going to get the vaccine. And I'm a little bit disappointed that there's nobody here from the Vaccine Command Center that can also, you know, give us update in terms of how the coordination is going with the different, you know, city agency. And then you talked about like the second dose. It would make sense if people are getting the second dose on time at the same place. So for the seniors, if they're getting it in their building or they're getting it at their senior center, it would make it so much easier for them to get the second dose. So I just want to hear about, like, actually, are the coordination happening? Are the planning done? You know, are we utilizing our senior provider network to really help make sure the seniors and the seniors with, you know, underlying illness are being taken care of?
Yes, well, thank you again. You know, I very much appreciate your comments because as someone, you know, who has taken care of older patients, I know just how important it is for us to meet them where they are. You know, with respect to how they already access care, the networks that they're a part of, as you mentioned, and making sure that the way that we think about the physical infrastructure of vaccination really takes that into account. And, you know, certainly that has been a part of, of our planning, including with DIPDA, the Department for the Aging, over the last several weeks and months. And now that older New Yorkers are eligible as of this week, I'm really looking forward to being able to to roll that out to get as many of our seniors vaccinated as, as possible. We are, you know, actively thinking about all of the different sites, you know, not just the, the city sites that we've already mentioned, but also the places where seniors already go to get their care. You know, whether it's a pharmacy or the family doctor that they trust or, you know, other community sites that, that seniors are familiar with and, and that they frequent. So those are all important considerations. I appreciate what you said about the importance of second doses as well and doing it in a way that people can anticipate and expect where to come back for the second dose.
Time expired.
Of our planning too. So, and the last thing that I wanted to say is that, you know, certainly Dr. Easterling and I are very actively involved in the leadership of the Vaccine Command Center and making sure that the coordination occurs not just within the health department, but across all city agencies in the way that you've described.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Next we'll be turning to Councilmember Rosenthal for questions. You may begin when you are ready.
Time starts now.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Chairs, for holding this invaluable hearing and, you know, for all the leaders in the administration, you're doing God's work. Thank you for all of this. I'd like to follow up on the sort of, one of the themes, guiding themes from my colleagues, which is about, one, the desperation of communities. I think Councilmember Adams reading the BLAC statement and talking about her whole, her own community should stop everyone in their tracks. And, and so I'm wondering why we're in this situation? Is it funding problems? Is OMB saying, no, you can't spend money as you are, as you all, the professionals, are raising the hurdles and, and opportunities for, you know, better distribution, faster distribution? Do we have an opportunity now to reach out to the federal government and, you know, we're in ten days and, and actually try to get funding for this? Honestly, or is this mismanagement? I mean, I've always understood, New York City is big. I get that. New York City is complicated. We all get that, but that's why there's, our city government is the largest, you know, or the fifth largest of any municipality in the country. So it being large is not the excuse, you know? It having so many languages is not the excuse. This is New York City. Anyone who's worked in city government knows these things. So my first question is, what's keeping you? Why are these, why do these hurdles exist functionally? What, what can the city council do to fix these things? And secondly, just the specifics, because I've gotten this question a lot in my office, but just what is your timing? When will we know what the rollout will be for homeless shelters? As you are working with Commissioner Banks, you said you're working on it over the next few days. I, I just want to know, what, are you going to have an answer about this on Monday, in a month? Just tell me. I don't care what the answer is. I just want to know when. So again, what can we do? Is, is money the problem? Is management the problem? And, and please just don't say it's the complexity of New York because that's your job as administrators is to deal with the complexity of New York. Hypothetically, we have the resources to deal with how big this city is and how complex it is. But, yeah, so I'll stop there. You know all this, but what the public doesn't know is why is this a bumbled mess? And what, what should we be trying to do to fix this? We know we're not going to meet our goals. That, that's a given. So please don't, you know, no one should pretend we are. Thank you.
Well, thank you for the question. And, you know, as, as someone who has lived and, and served as, as a doctor and a public servant in New York City, one of the things that I've always appreciated is, yes, there is a tremendous scale here to serve and to do good. But also that scale means we have so many assets that we can, that we can take advantage of to do big things. Whether it's improving the health of New Yorkers through this vaccination campaign or, you know, the big things that have been done around education and other initiatives over the last few years. And so.
What the answers have been to date in this hearing so far. I'm trying to dig deeper.
I hear you. I hear you. Let me, let me try to go a level deeper then. You know, with respect to vaccination and the work that we have been undertaking. And first I should say, we have set big ambitious goals and, you know, they, they will be difficult, certainly, but I do think that we can reach.
You have to have these goals. I mean, all these things are no brainers, right? We, we're in a health friggin' crisis.
Time expired.
Asking you is, I don't see the sense of urgency. I, I don't see, you know, management on high alert to, to fix these problems. And I'm asking you to, to pull back the onion and tell us where are the flaws in the system? You know the answer to this question. And perhaps for political reasons, you can't say it out loud. But there are management flaws, there are funding flaws. What can you tell the public about these?
Yes, I, I understand your perspective. What I can tell you is that because of the, the federal and the state coordination that is required, you know, particularly with respect to supply of the vaccine from the federal level and then ensuring that we're following the eligibility guidance from the state level, those are important things that have to be taken into account in our rollout.
Vaccine to, to meet the demand of two million, which is in currently in A and one A and B, how long would it take if that, if that vaccine were in hospital freezers today? How long would it take to vaccinate two million people with the resources you expect to roll out?
Right. It would be quicker because you would be able to plan and roll things out in a way that takes advantage of the great natural capacity that I was alluding to, you know, not just hospitals, not just our city sites, but also the pharmacies, the community health centers, you know, the places where people get their vaccines on a day-to-day basis. And, and we have been planning for that, but it takes the ability to have that expanded eligibility and the knowledge of the supply and being able to plan for that.
But we're there though. We know who's in A, one A and one B. We know it takes two million. Would it take you six months if you had all the vaccines today? Or would it take you a year? Not you, obviously. You're doing great. So I should be clear, New York City. Would it take New York City six months or a year? Just give me a sense of, a scale, a scope.
And if it's okay, Councilmember, after the Commissioner answers this, could we have you hold till second round questions?
Of course.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you.
And, and, and I'll stop. I mean, I don't mean to be rude. I really don't. I just want the public to know the truth.
No, I, I understand and I very much appreciate it. You know, the, the timeline that we had set out at the last City Council hearing was by the middle of, of this year, two thousand and twenty-one is when we anticipated that, you know, the members of the general public would be able to get vaccinated. And we said, of course, depending on supply, again, that it would be spring of this year before, you know, it were as widely available as we would want to even get through phase one, which are the populations that we have talked about, you know, not just healthcare workers, but also our seniors, our essential workers and people with underlying health conditions. So, so, so that's the timeline that we had set out initially. And we need the help from those different levers of government to match with everything that we're doing to expand capacity and work with our colleagues across healthcare to make sure that vaccines turn into vaccinations.
So you're sticking with the same goal?
Well, we have gotten more specific about some of those goals with.
Sorry, sorry, number Levine.
No problem at all. No problem.
Challenging. Thank you.
Important questions, absolutely.
Thank you, Councilmember. I'm now going to turn it back to the Chairs for questions. Chair Levine, you may begin.
Thank you so much. And sorry to be keeping the pace moving. We just have a wonderful list of public testimony awaiting us that I want to get to as soon as possible. You know, Commissioner, while we have been conducting this hearing, there's been a number of news items that have dropped. One, we got the daily report on hospitalization in New York State. We don't have the city breakdown yet at this moment, but the statewide number on hospitalizations is a new high for this wave. It's just under nine thousand hospitalized. And I think we can expect that probably when we get the New York City number, it'll be over thirty-two hundred for the first time since, I think, May. And it's just a reminder that we can't be numb to the ongoing crisis of continual spread of COVID nineteen in New York City. And I, I know you've brought that up, but just, I want, I want to remind folks of that. Also, it's been come clear in the last hour that the governor has indeed committed the state to immediately expand eligibility to people who are sixty-five years and older and people who are younger and immunocompromised. And that certainly offers hope to a number of extremely high-risk individuals. But, but it also adds urgency to the need to expand capacity. If I had to guess, that's, I don't know, four hundred thousand new people added to eligibility in New York City, certainly in the hundreds of thousands on top of the approximately two million that had already been eligible. And it just adds additional urgency to our need to expand capacity. A topic that's been alluded to a number of times here and that you mentioned explicitly is that there are certain sites which are apparently giving preference to different segments of the eligibility group now. So you mentioned that pharmacies are now are doing exclusively people who are, well, I guess now it will be sixty-five plus. Can you explain whether there are other prioritizations for different groups in different types of vaccination sites such as city sites versus state sites versus hospital urgent care sites versus physician practice, as best as you, you can explain that, please?
Yes, thanks for the question. And, and, you know, I'm aware of some of the breaking news, but as we've been conducting the hearing, I haven't, I haven't fully digested it as yet. So, so with that, you know, proviso, you know, with respect to your question about the sites, thus far, it does seem as though, and again, this is state guidance that is being elaborated, that certain sites are being either prioritized or reserved, you know, for certain populations. My understanding is that as of now pharmacies are for seniors, you know, from yesterday it was seventy-five plus and we'll see if that changes in the state guidance. And then hospitals were encouraged to continue prioritizing healthcare workers as well. So those are the pieces of guidance that we have from the state thus far, but these things are changing day-to-day, as you know.
And, and I understand that, that the two groups that you just mentioned are, are extremely high priority for different reasons. Obviously seniors, high risk. It's great that they're getting some prioritization. Healthcare workers, for all the reasons we know, play such a key role. They're at risk. They're also potential spreader, so they have to be vaccinated. But boy, I certainly wouldn't want to add another step of complexity that the public had to navigate. It's already complicated enough as we've been talking about. So I, I'll, I'll just put in a plug for, and I understand these are probably not rules coming from the city, but that I'll put in a plug for allowing flexibility so that people can go to the site that they feel comfortable with or perhaps that is closest to them. And, and getting, giving a little room for that so that we just, at all times prioritize getting as many people vaccinated as possible, which I think we can agree is, is our goal. That's it for me on, on the second round. So I do want to thank you again, Commissioner, for being with us so far this morning for two and a half hours and a very busy day and your team. Dr. Easterling, you've been outstanding already in your new role. And to, to our friends at H and H and the whole DOHMH team, thank you for being here and for fighting this fight. And I'm going to pass it back to our committee counsel for, for the next question. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Levine. I'll now turn it to Chair Rivera for additional questions.
Thank you so much. I know, just to make it very clear, I know that it's more so supply than workforce, right, for some of the issues that you've had, that the city has really tried to work with community partners, but the federal supply just isn't there. Is, is that right?
That has been a major limitation for us, you know, in the two ways that I described, not just the absolute number of vaccines, which is very important for us to be able to go at the pace that we would like. But also the ability to plan so that we're not just looking ahead to next week, but being able to map out for the subsequent months.
Right. And I know yesterday when I checked in with health and hospitals, they said they were adding some of their mobile units. I believe they have 20 or 25. They're going to add another 20. And I just wanted to, in terms of coordination, I think that's great. Those can get to some of the senior residences and some of those community sites that all of my colleagues have mentioned. I just want to, you know, add that we have to make sure we're taking disability and, and physical limitations from people who might not necessarily be able to access some of those mobile units. But I know that you are all working on that. So I guess my most important question is, when can people with serious health issues who need to get medical treatment get the vaccine? And I know that we're going to be expanding some of that criteria for those as we get further down the line. There, there's controversy, controversy around those with type 1 diabetes being included. What about cancer survivors? And just to go a little further, I was contacted by someone who is living with HIV and has numerous allergies. She was told to wait because of that, but also that the vaccination, that the vaccine should be administered and done in a supervised clinical hospital setting, just in case she goes into anaphylactic shock. So when will we expand to those with underlying conditions and those who need to seek medical treatment? And what is the plan for those who will need specific circumstances met?
Thank you. Both really important questions. And again, I can't help but think about the patients that I've taken care of, you know, who would be in both of the groups that you're, that you're asking about. For the first, we do not yet have a precise timeline from the state with respect to when people with underlying health conditions would be prioritized and what specifically those underlying, that list of underlying health conditions would be. You know, as soon as that is made more clear, you can be sure that we will reflect all of our materials and begin to communicate, you know, about that point. And then the second one, you know, with respect to, to people who may require some more, you know, specific observation or have more detailed questions about their own clinical conditions. I think the most important thing that I can say is to encourage individuals to, to have those conversations with their doctors, whether it's their primary care doctor whom, you know, has been coordinating their care or a specialist, you know, who understands the details of their conditions the best, to be able to understand how it matches up with both their eligibility for vaccination, as well as whether there should be any special circumstances about the administration of the shot. For the vast, vast majority of people, including people who have a history of, you know, food allergies or seasonal allergies or dust allergies, the vaccine is safe and effective.
Okay. And I, I know that there have been a couple of announcements today and you all do have to run, and I want to honor that. One of the announcements was that Citi Field will now be a vaccination site. I'm not going to ask you if the Yankees are stepping up. Clearly, I have a bias. But I asked this because, you know, many of us agree that there is no other reason why live venues can't be set up to putting union labor to work, unemployed New Yorkers into action. And I know you're exploring that. And then, of course, with the recent launch of the Brooklyn Army Terminal. I, I think maybe, I know that celebrities don't solve our problems. Maybe a couple of players can get vaccinated there so that our communities can see their local heroes, trusting in the science, trusting in the operation. And also I can't help but think of what someone like Magic Johnson and his advocacy for HIV treatment, how that made such a huge impact. But I'm going to leave that there. And my, my last question is just, for those who do take the vaccine, do hospitals and healthcare providers have a plan for administering those second doses, right? This has been incredibly challenging for a number of reasons. But given that second doses involve more factors than the administering, than administering the initial dose, such as when the first dose was administered, which vaccine the person had originally received, you know, we want to be helpful in making sure that that second dose is successful. So I just wanted to ask, just really briefly, we touch on kind of making sure that that plan is implemented effectively. We are a little bit worried and making sure that as we get more people vaccinated with the first and second dose, maybe those hospital employees who are a little bit hesitant or who are waiting, maybe that can be part of this plan can be part of those efforts to assure them that not only is it safe, but there is a seamless plan in place to make sure that the first and second dose happens quickly and efficiently.
Thank you so much. And first, I just want to say thank you for the great ideas. And those are things that we can, we can take back both, you know, in terms of the vaccination itself, as well as enlisting messengers who can help us spread the word about vaccination. With respect to the protocol for second doses, I think, you know, particularly for hospitals, as you asked about, I think it will be best for me to turn to my colleague, Dr. Wallach, to speak about that procedure. If someone can unmute Dr. Wallach.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Chakshi and Chair Rivera for that question. That is a very important point and indeed is part of our standard operating procedure. When an individual comes for their first dose of the COVID-19 vaccine, in fact, they are given their second dose appointment at that same time. In addition, we have a tracker to be able to follow up to make sure that folks do return for their second vaccine. And if they miss that appointment, we will be reaching out to those individuals. To Dr. Chakshi's point early in the testimony, it is really important to follow the science and to follow the protocols that were used in the clinical trials that were able to get people to greater than 94% efficacy from these vaccines. So yeah, so at the time you receive your first dose, you will get your second dose appointment at the same time.
Okay, thank you. I know that's logistically challenging, so I want to thank you for answering my second round of questions and, and turning back to committee counsel. Thank you so much for your testimony and for all the time you've given us this morning and this afternoon.
Thank you, Chair Rivera. I see that Councilmember Levin has a question, so we will turn to Councilmember Levin next. And following that, if any other council members have questions, we will allow a second round, a limited second round of two minutes per question. Thank you. Councilmember Levin, you may begin.
Time starts now.
Thank you very much, chairs. And I apologize, I've been on multiple hearings this morning, so I apologize if this, if this has been asked already. But, sorry, hold on one second. Commissioner Chakshi, I was on a call with you a couple, maybe last week or so on a conference call. And the question that I had asked at the time was, you know, for, I'll give you a hypothetical individual, a senior citizen that's living in NYCHA, potentially with limited English proficiency and, and no technological proficiency, and who does not have, you know, family necessarily nearby to help her. How would she go about, you know, registering for an appointment for, for a vaccination? And, and are there, are there, are we looking towards having walk-in opportunities for vaccinations as well?
Thanks for your questions. I'll, I'll start and then turn to Dr. Easterling for a piece of this as well. You know, and thanks for making it very specific and human and tangible, you know, with respect to someone to hold in mind. For, for someone like the individual that you mentioned, there are a few different possibilities. One is they can call the, the call center number, 877 VAX4NYC, to schedule an appointment. The second is if they already have a relationship, you know, with a healthcare provider, let's say they have a primary care doctor at health and hospitals, you know, they would be able to access the vaccination in the same way they get all of their other routine care. And then the, and then the third part of it is, is some more specific outreach that we're doing specifically related to NYCHA residents. So, so I'll turn to Dr. Easterling for that piece of it.
Sure. Thank you, Councilmember Levin, for the, for the question. We have been working with our colleagues at, at New York City Housing Authority since wave one. And we're continuing to partner with the team where we've been thinking about how we're coordinating to do outreach to residents, specifically to our 75-plus population through robocalls, also through direct mailers. And we're, we're looking to expand more of that outreach as we move forward. This week, we're doing a number of town halls with our NYCHA colleagues and the Tenant Association leaders. And we'll, we're planning a training the trainer for our NYCHA providers. This is going to be in coordination with New York City Housing Authority as well as DIFTA, as we want to make sure that the providers that are serving our 75-plus population understand how how to ensure that they can connect with any transportation, access questions, but also to make sure that they're answering any questions related to the vaccine itself. And so all of this has already begun to roll out for this week and will continue to expand in the weeks to come.
And are there, so are there opportunities for walk-ins anywhere? Or is that on the, is that on the horizon?
We, we do encourage that for all vaccination sites, they are made by appointment. This is for several reasons. One is that it helps us to ensure that, you know, we have the adequate supply of vaccine for the people who are, who are, you know, scheduling their appointments. The second is that it helps us ensure that we follow good public health practice with respect to social distancing and managing, you know, the flow in any given place. And then, and then the third is, is really to ensure that we're able to do as much of the eligibility verification process, all of those things that have to be done before someone physically gets to the vaccination site in advance of the appointment.
Okay, I, one, one, you know, you don't need my recommendations, but one, one recommendation is to really focus on that phone number for anyone that is a senior citizen known to NYCHA or DIFTA. And getting that information to them in a, in a hard copy. So I'm glad to hear that there's hard mailers going out, but really, really making sure that they know that there's a phone number that they can call because I, you know, there are a lot of seniors in this city who do not have tech, you know, can't, are not going to be able to navigate, you know, that questionnaire online on their own. And, and so having the ability to call somebody and have somebody pick up the phone and walk them through that in multiple languages is absolutely essential. That's going to, I mean, that, that in terms of just manpower, that's going to be a, a, a real priority, I think.
Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you. I appreciate the recommendation.
Thanks. Thank you, chairs.
Thank you, council member. At this time, I'd like to ask if any other council members have questions. If you do, please use a Zoom raise hand function now. Seeing no other hands, we are going to conclude this portion. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Levin.
If we're doing a second, if we're doing a second round, I do have another question about people in temporary, in temporary housing, so congregate shelters or hotel-based shelters, so like semi-private shelters. This might have been asked already, but, but what, are they, are they going to be in 1B or is that not, not the case?
Yes, my understanding thus far is that the state included both people who are experiencing homelessness as well as staff serving homeless people in congregate shelters to be a part of 1B. So they were made eligible as of yesterday. We're very actively working with our colleagues at DHS, the Department of Homeless Services, to roll out vaccination in the coming days.
Okay, so, but that, there's a little bit of a definitional question there about what congregate, what mean, what does congregate mean in this, in this instance? Because people in, you know, two unrelated adults in a hotel room, is that considered congregate? Because we were, we, we were able to relocate people at the beginning of the pandemic, a good number of people out of Congress, out of quote-unquote, congregate shelters into hotel rooms. Is that, does that include hotels, that definition of congregate?
We, we can get back to you with a precise answer. My understanding, based on the state guidance, is that you know, the, the way that it's phrased is people living in a homeless shelter where accommodations must be shared with people who are not part of their household. And that includes both, of course, the people who are experiencing homelessness themselves, as well as people working in a shelter like that.
I mean, I think you could read that to include hotels because people are in hotels with one other person that's not their relative. So, I mean, that's because of the single adult shelter population, that's, you know, over 10,000 of the 17,000 or something. It's, it's a lot of people. So that's, that's an important question to get to the bottom of. And what about unsheltered individuals, people living on the street that have a case, that might have a case manager with one of the homeless outreach providers, but is, but is currently on the street?
Those are important points and we'll, we'll have to follow up with respect to the specific answers for those, based on.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Levin. Next, we'll hear from Councilmember Koo. You may begin when you are ready.
Time starts now.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Yeah, my question to you is the, the vaccine, the Costco and other drug stores they receive, are they counted as the city quota or, I don't know, or do they have this own separate source? If you say further, you give you the city the limited amount of vaccines. But so, all these private resources, they getting the same thing from your quota or from, they have their own quota?
It all counts for the city total, you know, in terms of the allocation that the federal government gives for New York City, whether it's a pharmacy or a hospital or one of our city sites.
So my second question, suppose a independent pharmacy, right, they can give vaccination? And if a patient comes in, receives vaccination, and he suffer anaphylactic reactions because of the limited resources in the pharmacy, right, they cannot help this patient that much. And, and the patient suffers severe consequences. So who is responsible for that? The insurance of the store or, or can they, can the patient come back and sue the pharmacy? Hey, no, this is not the, we don't have the adequate resources to give vaccinations.
Right. I, I understand your question and I'm not sure about the, the legal part of your question. But what I can say is that this is part of the reason that when we enroll providers who are eligible to administer vaccine, they have to demonstrate the ability to administer it both safely and effectively. That means demonstrating a chain of custody for storage of the vaccine to make sure that it doesn't spoil or expire, as well as having the ability to administer the clinical protocols, including that observation window, and being able to address if a severe allergic reaction happens on site.
Yeah, of course, it doesn't happen too much, not too often, but there's a chance. That's why I. That's why I think some they some pharmacy, they have nothing to enroll in the program. They're they're afraid of the consequences, you know?
Yes, we do have to be uh sure that um the vaccine can be safely and effectively administered wherever um you know, wherever people are going to get vaccinated.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Uh, we are not seeing any other hands, so we will be concluding administration testimony now. Thank you to the administration for your time. We will now be turning to public testimony. I'd like to remind everyone that we will be calling on individuals one by one to testify. Each panelist will be given two minutes to speak. For panelists, after I call your name, a member of our staff will unmute you. There may be a few seconds of delay before you are unmuted, and we thank you in advance for your patience. Please wait a brief moment for the sergeant-at-arms to announce that you may begin before beginning your testimony. Councilmembers who have questions for a particular panelist should use a Zoom raise hand function. And I will call on you after the panel has completed their testimony in the order in which you have raised your hand. I would now like to welcome Honorable Gail Brewer to testify. You may begin when you are ready.
Time starts now.
Uh, Borough President, I think we have an audio problem with you. Seems to be still a problem, Borough President.
Now it works.
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Okay, I'm so sorry. Uh, I am Gail Brewer, Manhattan Borough President, and I want to say thank you to this hearing. I cannot thank you enough because it's what is on everyone's minds. A couple of things. First of all, while I've been sitting here, as you know, the governor opened it up to sixty-five years. Um, and these are the questions that I've been getting all weekend as you have. First of all, what is the one place to go? I know that you've mentioned this to be able to find out. The state's gonna have a system and the city's gonna have a system. And from what I understand, that's not gonna change unless somebody can make that change. I've not been able to. I want to reiterate the fact of a phone number for seniors. All weekend long, they called you and they called me about where to go getting their kids to figure out the computer system. So that phone number, guess what? I think it has to be two numbers because I believe the Javits Center is gonna open up this weekend. Um, I believe that the state had a phone number. It got quickly filled up, but I don't even know if people know the difference what they're doing. The other issue is um the H and H sites over the weekend using an other URL because guess what was happening? Teachers had some secret URL, first responders had some secret URL, they were passing them around and then they got dis continued. That's what was really going on. So they were using the URLs set aside for first responders. So it's pretty much out of control. Um, and I just want to reiterate what Councilmember Chin and others said, the seniors need some kind of a strategy, whether it is the senior centers or whether it is something that has uh NYCHA. Now with NYCHA, apparently what's happening is somebody is calling to their credit, the hospitals and saying, do you have a NYCHA development near you? Could you please allocate time and resources to that? That's okay, but there's no plan for it. What what's the plan? Is it every NYCHA? Is it only if you're near a hospital? I don't know. And the other thing that's happening is around the city, at least in Manhattan, the larger developments are being asked. Please go ahead and figure out who's in your building and we will give you the vaccination. I'm not going to give names because I don't want to out people, but that's also going on. I could tell you, we are doing a mailing of a hundred and fourteen thousand plus. That's the number of voters over seventy-five in the Borough of Manhattan. And we're gonna do a mailing to them because I do believe mail is a one-way when we have good information that you can read reach this constituency. So I'm just here to say state's gonna have a system, city's gonna have a system. What is the coordination between the two of them? And then, of course, what do we do when we don't have good viable communication? Because that's exactly what's happening now, not to mention the languages, the homeless and all the other great issues that you brought up to everybody's attention. So thank you. This is a really important hearing. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Borough President. Um, I'd like to ask if any council members or if the chairs have questions. I see Councilmember Holden has a question. Councilmember Holden, you may begin when you are ready.
Thank you, Borough President, and uh you're you're kind of a, you're you're up on technology. And um, don't you think the city of New York, and I asked this of the Commissioner of Health, uh, don't you think the city of New York should have a one-stop portal to make it to find uh the vaccine nearest your home uh if you're eligible and then make an appointment all in one stop? And um, other cities have done it, states have done it. New York City is a tech leader. We can do it, but we're not doing it because we have, like you mentioned, a roundabout way to to find the the vaccine. So, I mean, I just called all the city agencies that that could help and they're not being asked for to help to create this one-stop portal. Do you do you agree with me?
I I agree with you, uh, Councilmember, but guess what? You've got a state issue and a city issue, just so you know. And usually, that's not the situation to the best of my knowledge. So you got two systems. And you also, of course, as you heard earlier, need a phone number that would be of assistance because many seniors really cannot navigate the computer situation.
Well, again, that could be, they could navigate through three-one-one if we set up the portal.
Yes.
By setting up the portal, um, we could make uh any, everybody can find out what's the closest vaccination center for them. What, you know, how long, you know, make an appointment and then go there. I mean, this we have the technology. We're not using.
What? Uh, Assemblymember um Epstein texted us that somebody, a senior called and was sent to Queens yesterday. Just as an example of the challenges we're all facing. So, yes.
And that's exactly it, but this, we can do it, we're not doing it. And uh, you know, because I checked with the 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 agencies and they all want to help. They're just not being asked. So we need to, we need to get to the administration to start the ball rolling and let's catch up to the twenty-first century here.
Got it.
Thank you. Thanks. Thanks, Borough President.
Thanks, Councilmember Holden. Um, Councilmember Levine?
Thank you so much and and Madam Borough President, you have just been incredible throughout this pandemic and we appreciate you speaking here today. I know you're aware of how many seniors are actually homebound or have limited mobility. And those are also some of the highest risks, so we have to have a solution for them. And uh I just want to know whether this is something that you've considered? Whether um you've thought about uh a way we should advocate to get this done for the sake of a large portion of those who are sixty-five and older who are eligible now but really cannot safely travel to a vaccination site?
I asked whether we can have to give the Department of Health credit. We met with them virtually and we asked that question. And the answer was, we're gonna try to get as many as we can with help to get to hopefully, as Councilmember Holden suggested, something near. But we do have a plan. I don't know what it is, Councilmember. This is the problem, to go to those who are truly homebound. But that's not a great answer. That's the answer I got yesterday. I am very frustrated by this whole thing. I'm trying to be nice because the Department of Health is so nice. But nice doesn't get you people back and vaccinated.
We need, we need shots in the arms. That's what we need. And uh, thi- this is a logistical challenge, as the as the Commissioner explained, because of the need to cold storage for the vaccines, but the other parts of the country which have figured this out. And there are uh many wonderful medical services that are visiting people in their homes now who are homebound. And one option would be to activate them uh and just get them the facility to and and the legal authority to offer a vaccine. So uh we would welcome the chance to keep working with you on this.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Um Thank you, Borough President Gail Brewer. We will now be turning to our next panel. I now like to welcome David Rich to testify. You may begin when you are ready.
Time starts now.
Thank you very much for having me. As many of you know, I'm with the Greater New York Hospital Association, which represents all of the hospitals in New York City, both public and not-for-profit. As you also know, our hospitals and their dedicated caregivers answered the call when COVID nineteen struck earlier uh in early last year. And they've been continuing to meet that call all throughout. They've had COVID patients throughout. And now we are in a second surge that they are dealing with. But now they're also focused on being vaccine administrators because they're committed to defeating this pandemic, which is part of their view that healthcare is a human right. Our association, Greater New York, is serving as the New York State Vaccination Hub for New York City at the request of New York State Department of Health. The goal of the hub is to assist all the parties that are playing a role in the implementation of New York City's vaccination program to work together to ensure that everyone in New York City has access to a COVID nineteen vaccination in accordance with the prioritization plan set forth by New York State Department of Health as vaccine becomes available. Many of the activities needed to successfully implement the vaccine program in this region have been developed and are being planned and implemented by DOHMH within New York State guidelines. As you heard today, the extraordinary number of efforts that New York City DOHMH is engaging in. Our role then is not to duplicate them but to coordinate with them, communicate with New York State DOH and DOHMH as well as with other entities that will administer vaccines to New Yorkers in the coming months to make sure that they understand all the program policies and procedures as they evolve the prior prioritizations and also field questions and requests for information from healthcare administrators. We're extremely excited to hear about the prioritization increase that was announced today by the governor after the CDC changed some of its guidelines. However, what we are is supply. We are very interested in being able to vaccinate patients. We have not really been able to do that yet. There are a lot of vulnerable patients that we have in oncology programs, that we have in cardiac programs, many of whom are the vulnerable populations that you talked about today. It would make sense for hospitals to step up and vaccinate those regular patients that they have who are very vulnerable. The last thing I'd like to say, seeing my time is up, is we will also be working very closely on equity and inclusion with the mayor's task force. Dr. Easterling is coming tomorrow to speak to many of our hospital leaders about outreach to vulnerable communities and underserved communities. We're also working with the governor's task force on equity and inclusion to make sure that um we can be part of the solution in making sure that vulnerable communities are vaccinated. And we just hope to get there. We just need the supply. If New York City is only getting a hundred thousand vaccines this week, many of our hospitals will probably not get any at all. And so it's really a question, and I know the governor is frustrated, the mayor is frustrated. It's really a supply question as far as we're concerned. We need to vaccinate our patients. We need to continue to vaccinate our workers. And we will try and work with anyone who possible to try and make that happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony. I'd like to turn it to Chair Rivera for questions.
Good afternoon. Thank you so much for being here and for your testimony. So, you know, we had uh representatives from health and hospitals here, but I wanted to ask generally, how is Greater New York working to ensure quality messaging about vaccine safety to hospital staff who may be skeptical or hesitant? And do you know about how many health workers in your entire system have been hesitant or skeptical or received the vet or refused the vaccine?
That is a great question, uh, Madam Chair. There are a number of things that we've been doing ourselves along with eleven ninety-nine and also the hospital administrators have been doing. It is only in our interests that as many healthcare workers agree to be vaccinated as possible. And so with eleven ninety-nine uh through our health joint healthcare education project, we've sent out three mass mailings now um to eleven ninety-nine workers who obviously are not all the workers in the hospitals, but are a very large percentage to encourage them, to provide them education, to help them understand what side effects are. We've also done a digital campaign aimed at eleven ninety-nine workers along with the union. Um, and we've also, the union has had a number of town hall halls to try and encourage their members to be vaccinated. And I think what we're seeing over time, as uh Dr. Choxey mentioned, is that we're seeing that a lot of workers have not necessarily wanted to be first and maybe even didn't want to be second. But we think they really will come around and agree to step up and be third um and will get the vaccine going forward. It has varied a lot in terms of hesitancy from hospital to hospital. I think a lot depends on the demographic makeup of the workforce of a particular hospital. You know, as I know as Baron was mentioning earlier, um, there are very good reasons why certain populations are hesitant and have concerns. And we need to try and get over those um for their own safety and also for the safety of their families and the patients that they serve.
Okay, so what role do hospitals play in vaccine distribution specifically for those in phase one B?
So in, so right now, the guidelines that came out yesterday, which I guess are gonna change now because it's now sixty-five and over, um, and also those who are immunosuppressed. The hospitals were told what they still need to prioritize. They can, they can actually vaccinate people in any of the current eligible categories, including one B. But they still need to prioritize their patient-facing healthcare workers. So to the extent that they have not yet um provided vaccinations or administered vaccinations to all of those workers, that's what they still need to prioritize. Beyond that, um, they can start, subject to the availability of vaccine, to vaccinate people who are over seventy-five, to vaccinate other essential workers who are in the one B category. But as I mentioned, um, so far, hospitals really, their allocation has been based on their workforce and not on their patient populations. So so far, at least, there isn't a lot left over that hospitals are getting to actually be able to go out and uh do clinics. They have done some and they're going to begin doing some. Uh, the city and the state both coordinated have asked certain hospitals to do some clinics for those as of yesterday who were over seventy-five, but now um going forward, perhaps a larger population. But um, there has been very limited ability for hospitals to do the general public, if you will, um, over seventy-five or even their patients up until this point.
But you mentioned the workforce, so I just want to make sure I understand that. It sounds like, you know, the number of vaccines that you have, you've been administering as efficiently as possible. Are are you saying, you know how many members of the public have gotten vaccinated in hospitals in the past two days since one B began? Are you proactive in reaching out to members of the public? Um, in terms of those who are eligible to get the vaccine?
So as you know, yesterday was the first day that seventy-five and over were allowed. Um, and so I don't have a lot of information on that yet. But I will say, one of the problems that the hospitals have had, even vaccinating their workers, is one of the problems that Dr. Choxey mentioned earlier, which is we often don't find out that we're getting vaccine until it actually shows up at the loading dock from one day to the next. And so that has been a concern and a problem in terms of trying to make appointments even for our own employees, let alone as we now hopefully move into a new phase of being able to vaccinate patients as well. I mean, the ideal thing, I think, for hospitals would be particularly people who are in programs like oncology programs, cardiac programs, other programs where they regularly see very vulnerable New Yorkers. It would be great for them to be able to vaccinate them when they are having their regular uh regular visits to those programs over time. We just don't have the vaccine available yet to be able to do that.
Okay, I just, you know, I know during the testing uh phase, I know we're still in the testing phase, but um, we're hoping to see a much clearer effort from hospitals and the association. They are nonprofit organizations. You know, we were just concerned that the efforts as to which some of your hospital members, um, what they did to aid the public in testing. So we want to just make sure that there is a clear, more organized effort that we all do our part, especially the nonprofit organizations in your association. And um, you know, thank you for being here. I guess thank you for for answering the questions uh somewhat. And appreciate your testimony. I'll turn it over to committee counsel.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Rivera. I'm now going to turn it over to Chair Levine for questions.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. And Mr. Rich, thank you for being here and testifying. And I want to offer my thanks to the hospitals of this city who have been through essentially a war over the last year. And I'm just so grateful, especially to the frontline workers. Who have been in there serving, caring, sacrificing for us. And I know that this moment is, is challenging because you're dealing both with the launch of the vaccine program and a mounting second wave that is placing more strain on your staff. So I don't minimize that and we're grateful for all that our healthcare institutions are doing. We certainly are going to need hospitals to help vaccinate beyond their staff. We're going to need them to vaccinate patients and potentially members of the public, just because we have such a massive pool of eligible, eligible people now. It may be with the latest expansion, two and a half million people in the city. So I guess my first question is, is it not true that most of the hospitals in the city have completed at least offering vaccination to all of their frontline staff? Understandably, some are hesitating for now. But the hospitals that I've been in touch with indicate that they've at least gone through a full round of their their COVID patient facing staff at this point. Is that accurate?
Most of them have. Also though, as we mentioned before, and as you indicated earlier in the hearing. It does vary a lot, what percentage of staff that is depending on the hesitancy rate. And the refusal rate at a particular institution. But yes, for the most part, they are, they have been able to get through most of their staff. And have also been able to focus on physician practices, ambulatory care practices, et cetera, which are also part of
Which is also very important. So obviously, anyone who's, who's been hesitant until now, we hope they change their mind as soon as possible and they will still be eligible. So no one's going to miss their chance. But this does seem like you have an opportunity to really pivot and kind of open up to broader vaccination. Seems like the place you would start are your patients. Who are over sixty-five and you'll, you'll also know who's got immune compromised. Is that happening? Are, is there outreach to patients? Are they being invited in for vaccination at this point?
I do not believe that that has happened in to a major extent yet because the seventy-five and over again just went into effect yesterday. And hospitals have still been very unclear about how much vaccine they will receive in any given week. As Dr. Choxey mentioned before, the processes that orders get put in. The city gets allocated a certain amount. In this case, in this week, only a hundred thousand. And then the city will need to decide based on the priority groups, based on the different provider groups that it will allocate vaccine to, who will get what. So to some extent, it's going to depend on whether the new vaccines that come in get allocated to other provider groups that haven't necessarily gotten much yet. To places like the Javits Center, the hubs that are being set up. I'm sorry, the pods that are being set up, et cetera. So it, there's, the scarcity right now creates it a little bit of difficulty. To figure out exactly how to go ahead and offer people, people appointments. But I'm really hoping that as some new vaccines come on in the next, hopefully in the next few weeks. And as the Biden administration comes in and hopefully releases a lot more. We will get to the point where hospitals can really be a part of through their ambulatory care centers and not just for their patients. Many have signed up also to do it for, just generally for the general population. As well. The state has asked who's, who's willing to do that. So has the city. And most hospitals have stepped up to the plate to say they would be willing to do that as well.
That's good. And we certainly need that to happen as soon as possible. So I'm going to pause now, but thank you for speaking and coming out here today. Thanks so much.
Absolutely. And thanks for your kind words.
Thank you. I'd like to now ask if any other council members have questions. Seeing no hands, I'd like to thank you for your testimony. And now we'll be moving on. Our next panel in order will be Jeff Oceans, followed by Judy Sheridan Gonzalez, followed by Pat Kane, followed by Rose Duhan. Jeff Oceans, you may begin when you are ready.
Time starts now.
Yes, thank you. I just want to say thank you to the chairs for allowing me to testify. I am the president of Local three zero zero five of DC thirty-seven. Representing employees from the Department of Health, Mental Hygiene and OCME. I want to let it known that yesterday, the Department of Health, DC thirty-seven, including myself and other local presidents, had met with Office of Labor Relations yesterday. But I do need to make it clear that we do share some similar sentiments regarding technologies that are involved. We do have many members who are willing to go ahead and volunteer to work these pods, but there seems to be a problem with the technology. We know that the websites that we've heard about this morning are continuing for us as members slash employees as well. It's quite confusing. If not, it is not user friendly. And oddly enough, if it's being run by the Office of Emergency Management, why are we getting emails? That are coming in from a third party source that's titled Samaritan Technologies? So this is just mind boggling because we thought we would recognize an official New York City government email. We're always trained to look for these emails that may be considered phishing expeditions or things that could lead to security breaches. But we never expected to see something coming in from a non-city email. Furthermore, I also wanted to let it be known that our employees or slash members who are looking to volunteer. We need more clarity and more reinforcement about how they're going to get the vaccinations. It's led to some discussion over the last weekend or so. We did receive some clarity yesterday between the Health Department and the Office of Labor Relations with DC thirty-seven. But we still need to make sure that our members will be granted the opportunity to get the vaccine. Either when they arrive for their first shot, or I mean, when they arrive for their first opportunity to go ahead and volunteer. Or at some point, they shouldn't have to wait towards the end of the three shifts that they have to go ahead and volunteer for. But then, you know, okay, thank you. And I just want to make one last statement that I also have members who are telling me who live in buildings with senior citizens. And that the senior citizens are telling them that they're also having trouble. So you see that they're across the board. This whole thing regarding technology can be better deployed. But otherwise than that, I think the Health Department has been doing a decent job. And I continue on representing the members that are working this. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Do the chairs. Councilmember Levine.
Just briefly, President Oceans, thank you to the members of three zero zero five. Who have just been incredible throughout this pandemic. I mean, the, the Health Department has just been under unbelievable strain. And I know that your members have felt that. And how wonderful that they're actually agitating to be part of, of the vaccination program. And we need this to happen. We need really thousands of people mobilized. And the first place to start is city agency employees like first and foremost, DOHMH. So I appreciate you raising this and, you know, happy to work with you to make sure that your members are deployed where we desperately need them now to ramp up vaccination in the city. So thank you for speaking out today, sir.
You're quite welcome. Thank you, Chair Levine.
Thank you, Chair. If there are no other questions, I'd like to thank you for your testimony. And we'd like to move on to our next panelist, Judy Sheridan Gonzalez. You may begin when you are ready.
I'm starting now.
Thank you. Thank you for inviting Nice to testify. I'm an ER nurse in the Bronx and the president of Bar forty-two thousand member union. As frontline caregivers in the belly of the pandemic and observers of the vaccines rollout. We can uniquely judge the efficacy of our healthcare system. Our experiences confirm our worst fears. It's unsustainable. To save lives, we need universal access to care, mandatory safe staffing, and adequate revenue to fund a robust public health infrastructure. As an efficient, universal vaccination program is essential to provide mass immunity verified by epidemiological history, success must be built on the following. The broadest possible information reach out to restore public confidence in our institutions, in science and safety and efficacy of the vaccines. Worms so the public can voice valid concerns, get honest answers. Person-to-person direct contacts critical in dealing with historic legitimate reluctance. Free accessible vaccines for all. Pressure on the feds to enhance production using the DPA. And now priority-based rollout for all vulnerable folks as described without line jumping or buying in. We must have continued use of superior PPE ventilation and all social measures to prevent transmission until the situation's resolved. We need total transparency in our healthcare facility, which is lacking. Absolutely no mandatory requirements for vaccination anywhere. Avoid drastic punitive measures if errors occur, but correct infraction. Our members report chaos and confusion in the initial vaccine rollout. Much of this has occurred due to placing responsibility with the private sector. Successful vaccination programs in the past were built on a supported viable public health infrastructure. That model ensures an effective organized program mitigates disparities and promotes transparency and accountability if it's supported. The program must be centrally organized with resources and coordinating responsibility channel to the DOH and H and H. Who can ensure that trained emergency personnel and procedures are in place at all sites. Private supportive role. Thank you. Requesting emergency funding from a dramatically altered federal government will facilitate hiring the many clinicians and support staff necessary to rapidly roll out an effective program. While volunteers are always welcome, they cannot be the main source of personnel. Nice is more than willing to work with the city on this project. It is truly a matter of life and death. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. I'd like to now welcome Pat Kane to testify. You may begin when you are ready.
Time starts now.
Hi, thank you very much for the opportunity to testify and thank you to the co-chairs. So I want to echo Judy's comments. I'm the executive director of the New York State Nurses Association. You know, as far as what's happening in the hospitals, particularly health and hospitals where we kind of see a high rate of hesitancy. I think Dr. Chotsky spoke before about people New, New Yorkers already know in terms of getting the vaccine. And I think that that's been one of the issues at H and H. Anecdotally, I was told that they were using travelers to vaccinate the workers. And I think if we can get some of the staff that folks are familiar with there, doing the vaccinations, that that would help. As far as the hospitals, we look forward to be able to vaccinating our inpatients. You know, that needed nurses are going to need some education with that. I was, it was really a privilege to volunteer yesterday at the Hillcrest site. The Department of Health and to get to talk to Dr. Chatsky about some of the, the issues that I had with signing up. And I just want to echo Jeff's comments. I think we really need to push that. I do think we have a workforce issue as well as a supply issue. A lot of the elderly that were waiting for a long time, we're scared that they were out in the public waiting. We need to recruit more volunteers and get them trained up. I know the state has expanded practice for a lot of other titles. And I think that we can also help with training those folks. There's a component, I see the states relying on Cornell, but we have CUNY, we have a lot of nurse educators and faculty. And those people that get the didactic training are going to need nurses, doctors, other professionals that are currently licensed to give vaccinations to evaluate their competency. We'd like to help partner with that. I think that's going to be an important piece. Yesterday, as far as who I saw there, I saw, did see a lot of teachers. I think they were able to navigate the system a little bit. I was thinking about grocery store workers. Maybe we can get big chains as part of the protocols that they have to do for safety. To really push this out to folks. We do have safety concerns in the retail environment that adequate facilities are in place to observe people after they get vaccinated. And perhaps we steer people at higher risk for reaction to certain sites where we can enhance their safety. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, I'd like to welcome Rose Duhan to testify. You may begin when you are ready.
Time starts now.
Good afternoon. I'm Rose Duhan, president and CEO of the Community Healthcare Association of New York State. My testimony today is on behalf of forty-four community health centers that operate more than four hundred fifty sites, serving one point three million patients across New York City. Community health centers have enthusiastically embraced the opportunity to be on the front lines of vaccine delivery. The community served by health centers, low income and majority black and Latinx populations have been disproportionately adversely impacted by COVID nineteen and are at highest risk for severe health consequences. Health centers are committed to ensuring that the vaccine is delivered quickly and efficiently to all community members. Until this week, state mandated guidelines have prioritized vaccination of patient facing healthcare workers. And health centers have stepped up to vaccinate providers of behavioral health services, including mental health, substance use disorder, and developmental disability services. Before any high-risk patients could be vaccinated. While they are pleased to play this role for other healthcare providers, they've also been frustrated that they have not been doing everything they can to protect their patients. The combination of limitations on who is eligible to be vaccinated in phase one A. And the way the vaccine is packaged, time eat initial vaccination rates, slowing down the vaccination process and risk wasting limited vaccine supplies. We are pleased that there has been an opening up of vaccine eligibility to categories within phase one B, which includes high-risk individuals that are non-healthcare workers. We strongly support flexibility, particularly in instances where there is a potential spoiling vaccine. And providers to use their professional judgment to vaccinate willing individuals to ensure that no vaccine is unused or wasted. We are also concerned with suppliers eager to receive vaccine to meet demand. Expanding vaccine eligibility to all high-risk populations will ensure equitable and fast vaccine administration and prevent wasted or discarded doses. Our members CHCs are eager to offer the vaccine more broadly to high-risk populations. The Committee Healthcare Association and its members are proud to partner with the city to ensure a successful vaccination campaign for all city residents. Thank you to the council for convening this important hearing.
Thank you for your testimony. I'd like to now welcome Dr. Denise Nunez to testify. You may begin when you are ready.
Time starts now.
Good afternoon. I am Denise Nunez. I'm Dr. Denise Nunez and I'm a pediatrician in the Bronx and in Edworth. I work with Somos Network. I'm a general in an army of doctors and health workers battling to protect multiple communities. We are vaccinators. We're testing. We're feeding the hungry. Here's the good news. We are already working in partnership with the city of New York to ultimately immunize millions. In fact, I'm actually right now in one of those schools where we're vaccinating frontline city workers. This work started yesterday. My job has been of one as one who leads life into care. And Somos, a network of the community providers I work for was created to bring access, quality and equity to care. That means delivering care to the people who need it most, diverse communities, communities of color, poor communities. Many don't speak English. Many are undocumented. Many of whom are intimidated by a corporate healthcare system. And let me, let me be clear. They don't seek care at the hospital. In fact, Somos, despite the fact that we are over twenty-five hundred neighborhood doctors and treat almost a million New Yorkers fall to cracks too often because we aren't a hospital. We aren't an establishment. We're disruptors. But that disruption works in favor of New York City because we are decentralized. We are in neighborhoods. We are on our patients' corners. We speak their language. We are part of their culture. But there is more. In order for this ambitious and life-saving vaccination mobilization to work, and we now, we know this not just from experience, but through research, data and polling. The city needs community doctors vaccinating our communities. In fact, two-thirds of people who need to be vaccinated. Our research shows must be convinced and feel the only trustworthy voice is their family doctors, the nurse they know. People they see walking down the same block. That's us. So my message today, we appreciate our partnership with the city so far. But we need to go farther for this to work. We appreciate our partnership to test school kids and teachers. And we're doing that over four hundred public schools in a partnership with the DOE and UFT. The stated partnership create models that we, that can and should be national as we work together to get people to, to take the vaccine. If it works in the Bronx, it will work in Houston, Phoenix, Orlando. But these doses do not good in a warehouse, in a hospital storage facility. But I will tell you this, get the doses in our hands and we will get them into the arms. We can immunize one million New Yorkers if we get the support that we need. So Somos doesn't fit any mold, but we have created one. Then that mold will work citywide and nationwide. We collaborate with churches, schools, unions. We go to where people who we need to be treated. It's why we are formed Somos five years ago. Why we are here today to offer you a great deal of experience and that we have gained since the arrival of the virus and before. It's up to the city and other cities to use us. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony. I'm now going to turn it over to the chairs for questions. Chair Levine.
Thank you so much. And Pat and Judy, thank you so much for being here. And my goodness, your members have done something just remarkable for the city over the last eleven months. I know that this has been like going through a tour of duty in a war zone for your members. And they deserve safe staffing ratios. Patients deserve safe staffing ratios. And Judy, I think you mentioned other key priorities. It's just more obvious than ever that we need universal healthcare, preferably by a single payer option. And that we need more and that we need more resources in our healthcare system. And yes, we should ask the wealthiest amongst us to step up to make that happen. I also know that you're dealing with strains on multiple fronts right now as you care for a growing number of patients with COVID, as you yourself, many of your members are getting the vaccine. And you're also leaders in the vaccination program itself. And if I'm not mistaken, I believe there must be a nurse onsite at all times at every vaccination site. And I wonder if you could talk about the role that your members are playing in vaccination sites beyond hospitals? Because we need to get beyond hospitals. We need to be in every community in the city. And talk about the roles and the challenges, perhaps, if you could, that your members are facing in this operation.
So I was able yesterday to volunteer at the vaccination site at Hillcrest, which was, it was really an emotional experience, I have to say. You know, community, there were a lot of community members that were anxious, but were also literally tears of joy I saw yesterday. It was quite moving. It was, as Jeff said, really hard to navigate to get in to volunteer. I, it took me several times. I had to go through Serve New York. The Medical Reserve Corps had to redo my passwords several times so I could get in. So we do really have to work on that.
Unbelievable.
You know, training is also something that we have to work on. And as I said, I think we are going to need with this surge coming in New York City, you know, the other titles whose practice has been expanded to be able to vaccinate are going to need help to get that training. They can get training online, but they do need someone who's already licensed to give vaccinations to do a competency. I have to say yesterday, the Department of Health site, it was really extraordinary. I had never worked at a point of distribution before. The organization, everything was really set up so that the vaccinators could just keep vaccinating. The logistics, the supplies. If I needed anything, I held up a red paddle and someone immediately came over to me to assist, whether that was a language need, a supply need, or I had a question or a problem with the technology. I think that's the key to get the capacity up. I think the way that we distribute these things to the various sites needs to be on how well they're functioning, right? How many vaccinations they're able to get in people's arms in the hour. There was a workforce issue yesterday. A lot of the vaccination stations were set up for two vaccinators. And I was at a station by myself. I think a lot of the nurses who work for the DOE, you know, we're back at school Monday. I think they had more vaccinators on Sunday, but we still were able to get a lot of people through. And like I said, I think the, how the, these points of distribution, these pods are set up by the Department of Health is really an example of, you know, just efficiency and every contingency is planned for. There's emergency services available. So it's a great program, but it does require a lot of staff and not just the clinical staff, the vaccinators, but a lot of support staff.
Yeah, I had difficulty signing up with the MRC also. I finally was able to schedule some shifts, but I think the problems with those sites are really based on the lack of staff.
Yes.
And I did request to work with my own institution to assist in vaccinating. They said there was no staff needed. They didn't even refer me to the MRC. So we really have to have a coordinating body, which I think should be the public health system that coordinates, that has a feed-in for volunteers, and that we're all ready and trained. What if we do get a shipment of vaccines and we don't have the staff to vaccinate? We've never been well-prepared in this pandemic. This is an opportunity to have, you know, everybody on hold, everything ready, all systems go. Should we get more vaccine? We're ready to go and we're vaccinating everybody, just like we did in nineteen forty-seven during the small puck scare.
Amen. Amen to that. Six million people in less than a month.
Yeah, we could do it. We have people ready to do it, but the coordination is really a problem.
And, and part of the secret of the success in nineteen forty-seven was mobilizing volunteers massively. And we, obviously, we need, we need staffing in these sites, but we also need to make it easier for people like yourselves who are willing to help out. So that's just hugely important. Thank you to both of you and to your members for what you've been doing. For time, I don't have time to ask questions to other two panels, but I just want to make a quick comment that under any scenario, FQHCs have to be a major pillar of this vaccination program. You're in the communities. You have cultural competency, often multilingual staff. And we just need to make sure that you have adequate supplies of vaccine, logistical support, and also that financing is in place, that you can be a huge part of this. And to Somos, it's, again and again, you guys have emerged when the city needed a solution. You did it big time in testing. And I'm really thrilled that I think now you're running three sites, if I'm not mistaken. And I know you have a unique ability to mount mobile operations.
We're actually, we're able to do five thousand vaccines in every site a day. We have a hundred and twenty staff members and more than half are doctors. So all the doctors of the community.
That's incredible. Thank you. Thank you to Somos for what you're doing.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Back to you.
Thank you, Chair Levine. I'd now like to ask Chair Rivera if she has any comments or questions.
I just want to say thank you. I, I know one important issue that we finally got to at this hearing, I guess finally got an answer, was around eligibility for patient advocates, whether they be doulas or social workers. And Dr. Chotsky confirmed they're eligible to receive vaccines at city-run sites. But I know there are also caregivers for family members. And I want to thank you all for your advocacy and making sure that we highlight those caregivers, those domestic workers that desperately need to be prioritized. So we will not stop fighting for that. And I want to thank you for always thinking of those people, many of them, most of them are women and women of color. So thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to ask if any other council members have questions at this time. Seeing no hands, I'd like to thank this panel for their testimony and we'll be moving on to our next panel. In order of testimony, we'll be hearing from Anthony Feliciano, followed by Judy Westler, followed by Kimberly J. Smith, followed by Kevin Jones, followed by Scott Karalitis. Anthony Feliciano, you may begin when you are ready.
Time starts now.
Thank you. My name is Anthony Feliciano. As stated, I am the Director of the Commission on the Public Health System. I want to thank Chairs, Chair Rivera and Levine, and all the council members and their staff for holding this important hearing. I would say, start with my father, who is eighty-six-year-old, strong and patient man. But last night I had to go through a long process of trying to get him an appointment. And the main issue was every time I went through the whole process, I had to fill out the same form online. Each time I had to, each time to try a different place to get an appointment. And so that caused a lot of issues, beside being bumped off twice and spending two hours on it. And so those things need to get fixed. But I want to reemphasize that communities, especially people of color, can embrace therapies and vaccination attempts, but not with the total contest of experimentation issues. And we all know that. And one thing we need to do is go hand in hand with raising public confidence and dispensing equitably and assessably the vaccination to work with community-based organizations more deeply. I find it very troubling to over-rely on Greater New York Hospital Association and other entities on this instead of a real, true collaboration with community-based organizations. I think we need to review that. We need to review all the monitoring and aggregation of vaccination data and move that forward. We need to foster a better relationship and organization with hospitals, pharmacies, with trusted leaders in communities as they're doing the dispensing, as it expands to those pharmacies and others. We have to keep prioritization real simple because we have created overly complicated prioritization systems on top of a layer of a very fragmented set of too many decision-makers and different task forces and different bodies of decision-making. So we need to look at that. We should look at, not looking at we're holding vaccine supplies to ensure the second dose availability will happen. We should look at, research has shown that we can at least try to look at vaccine production ramp-up and allocate second doses from new supplies rather than keeping existing supplies in inventory. And we should not penalize delays in setting healthcare facilities for not rolling out or dispensing vaccination. We should look at what the issues were and why it created those delays. Those are clear issues. And majorly, we, again, the rollout, we should have communities selecting sites and working together to figure out where the proper size, these mass pods are great, but some of them are located in places not clearly close to people. And I agree with the issue of language access and the issue of transportation to them. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we will be hearing from Judy Westler. You may begin when you are ready.
Time starts now.
Hi, Judy Wester. I did not actually ask to testify, but I will just use this time for a few off-the-cuff remarks. One is, I think the governor needs to be challenged for the way that he is handling this. And I wish that the city were more in a position to make their own determinations. I think we'd be a lot better off if that were the case. Then I don't know if there's a willingness to make that challenge, but, but people should be thinking about that. I think having the Greater New York Hospital Association in charge of New York City means that the public sector and the public are left out. And that is something that also needs to be challenged. I'm eligible now, and I cannot tell you what a hard time I've had trying to get an appointment. And I think I'm pretty sophisticated and have a computer and know how to use it. And I just tried to go on and I live in Manhattan and can't get on the subway because of a fracture in my back and was given an appointment at Cumberland in Brooklyn. So I think, you know, there are some very, very serious problems that need to be worked out. I feel very strongly, I'm a member of the souvenir cab, and that's where I go for my, my care, that working through communities and with communities is the way to really do this. And unfortunately, that doesn't seem to be, it's a little more happening in the public sector. I think not happening in the private sector. One more thing I want to say.
Time expired.
Can I just say one more thing? And that is that I got two emails, one from NYU Langone and one from Lenox Hill Northwell, both of which I don't go to for care, and they have offered me appointments. Whereas I can't get an appointment in the place where I go for my care. That's a serious problem. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. I'd like to now welcome Kimberly J. Smith to testify. You may begin when you are ready.
Time starts now.
Hi, good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to testify at today's hearing. My name is Kimberly Smith. I'm the Senior Director for Community Health Planning and Policy at Callan Lord Community Health Center, which is an FQHC, which primarily serves the LGBTQ population and is open to all regardless of ability to pay. Today, I'm actually joining you in our capacity as active members of the COVID-19 Working Group. We are a coalition of doctors, healthcare professionals, scientists, social workers, community workers, and activists, all committed to a rapid and community-oriented response to the COVID-19 pandemic. And we'd like to reiterate and uplift the experience of community health clinics this afternoon. So I won't repeat some of what has been said. But, you know, we stand at the ready during this next phase of the pandemic for massive inoculations for our population and our communities. And we are eager to move forward, working in coordination with government to provide access to vaccines for vulnerable, low-income, young people and seniors. And in particular, FQHCs are well-positioned to reach people of color and others who are part of marginalized communities. However, we are very concerned that the guidance and policies informing vaccine distribution and accessibility in New York City leave community health centers severely limited in their ability to address the challenges of mass vaccination in vulnerable communities. First, restrictive vaccine eligibility prioritizations and threats and fines and fees to healthcare institutions that cannot administer the vaccine at a predetermined pace are working counter to the goal of vaccinating as many people in our communities as possible. And in some cases, this high-pressure effort and the possible loss of vaccine access has increased vaccine hesitancy, even among staff in community health clinics. Until expanded eligibility is achieved, we ask that the city help to coordinate standby lists of frontline healthcare providers that can be used to ensure no vaccines are wasted in accordance with the newly.
Time expired.
Secondly, we are severely under-resourced in this effort, and the city should build a newly expanded list of professionals who are able to vaccinate and create a volunteer program that would place vaccinators in clinical locations that are, require additional support. And finally, there's an urgent need for culturally appropriate and accessible education and materials about the COVID-19 vaccine. I will submit this testimony in writing. It's much lengthier and details can be found there. Thank you again for the opportunity.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, I'd like to welcome Kevin Jones to testify. You may begin when you are ready.
Time starts now.
Good afternoon, Chair Levine and Rivera and members of the Health and Hospitals Committees. My name is Kevin Jones. I'm the Associate State Director of Advocacy for AARP New York, which represents seven hundred and fifty thousand members, age fifty and older, in New York City. And I want to thank you for the opportunity to testify today. AARP is fighting for older Americans to be prioritized in getting COVID-19 vaccines because the science has shown that older people are at higher risk of death. Nationally, nearly ninety-five percent of all COVID deaths have been among Americans fifty and older. And AARP believes that this population should be prioritized for receiving vaccinations. We've also seen large disparities in COVID infections, hospitalizations, and deaths with Black and Hispanic-Latino family members, neighbors, and friends facing disproportionately high impacts from the pandemic. City data also shows Hispanic, Latino, and Black people have died at about twice the rate of white people. As we look to improve our vaccine rollout and strategy for vaccination rates, we will see, we see it through the lens of age and ethnicity. And the city's strategy must not only be effective and efficient, but it must also be equitable. As the city continues to experience heartbreaking loss of life and a devastating recession due to the pandemic, the city's vaccine rollout must ensure that we vaccinate those who are at a greater risk so that they and the city as a whole can get on the long road to recovery. We are very pleased that residents and staff of nursing homes were included in Phase 1A of vaccine distribution because nursing homes, both here and across the country, have experienced huge loss of life due to the virus. Additionally, residents that avoid falling ill must endure solitude and isolation. And as we know, loneliness is one of the greatest health threats facing older adults. We're also glad to see that our strategy is evolving and adapting to ensure more people can get vaccinated quickly. We appreciate Governor Cuomo's willingness to loosen and broaden restrictions and are optimistic about reaching more people through the city's moves to increase vaccination sites. Chairman Levine has called for twenty-four-seven vaccination site in every neighborhood, and we couldn't agree more. Sorry, I'll just close, I'll submit this in writing, but also we have a lot of work to do to inform our residents about safety, efficacy, and importance of vaccinations, and that responsibility falls on all of us. There's much more to be done. And AARP urges the city council to work quickly, as I'm sure you're committed to doing. Our city is counting on you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your testimony. I'd like to now welcome Scott Karalitis to testify. You may begin when you are ready.
Time starts now.
Good afternoon, and thank you to Health Committee Chair Mark Levine and Hospitals Committee Chair Carline Rivera for today's hearing and allowing us to testify. I'm testifying today on behalf of YAI, one of the largest nonprofit agencies in New York State, which provides critical services for more than twenty thousand people with autism, Down Syndrome, cerebral palsy, and other intellectual and developmental disabilities, or ADD, and their families. I'm also testifying as a representative of Premier Healthcare, a YAI affiliate, which offers primary care and specialty outpatient services. We're extremely grateful for support from the City Department of Health and Mental Hygiene, especially from Dr. Bindi Crouch and Jenny Seppcliff, which has allowed us to progress toward our goal to vaccinate all premier healthcare providers and YAI residents and staff in congregate care settings by January eighteenth. We're also eager to partner with New York City in vaccinating more than eight thousand people, including staff in congregate care settings run by our peers, including Q-SAC, Rising Ground, CFS, and Job Path over these next few months. To vaccinate New York and To vaccinate New York and protect this vulnerable section of the population, we need support. If the city could provide vaccine-specific funding, Premier Healthcare could rapidly accelerate vaccinations and prevent thousands of infections. While we have the expertise and facilities to succeed, we are not able to optimize either without assistance. As you would expect, vaccinating adults with intellectual and developmental disabilities simply takes more time. People who cannot wear a mask must be placed in an isolation room, requiring additional space and supervision. People with behavioral challenges normally require additional staff for support. People with sensory motor challenges need additional support and time for the incorporation of desensitization techniques. We need additional time to explain the vaccine FAQs, to be sure people understand and to answer any questions, and we require consent from legal guardians, which takes time and can result in rescheduled or missed appointments. Given these characteristics, administering the vaccine requires at least two staff members, one to provide the vaccine and one to collect required paperwork.
Time expired.
Review screenings and document vaccination. I'm going to make it really brief. I haven't mastered the figuring out how much text takes a certain amount of time. We could use your help in making this happen. City funding for vaccine providers like Premier Healthcare could help us vaccinate vulnerable New Yorkers in half the time and make sure we're doing it safely. The need is great, the need is now. We cannot wait for a state budget in April or a city budget in July. Thank you again for allowing us to testify and for all the work you are doing in this difficult time.
Thank you for your testimony. I'll turn it over to Chair Levine.
Well, it's just such a great panel with so many important organizations. I wish we had time to delve into all of them. I think something that might be a common theme here is that those of you who, as providers, are capable of being part of vaccine delivery, there is a financial burden that you need help managing. It's true that we're getting the supply of the vaccine covered by the federal government, so you're not paying, I guess, for the actual dose, but you're paying for all the staffing and infrastructure that's required to deliver the dose. I think that's what we're hearing. And it's something that I certainly feel would be a prudent investment for the city to activate all of you to expand our capability to reach particularly those on the margins who are being left behind. So really more of a comment than a question, but I just want to thank all of you for what you're doing and know that you have our strong support.
Thank you, Chair Levine. I'd like to now ask if there are any other council member questions. Seeing none, I'm going to thank this panel for their testimony, and we'll be moving on to our next panel. Our next panel in order of testimony will be Ravi Reddy, followed by Sarah Kim, followed by Hallie Yee. Ravi Reddy, you may begin when you are ready.
Time starts now.
So I'm clearly not joining you. Sorry, the label is her account. But on her behalf and on behalf of the Asian American Federation, I want to thank Committee Chairs Rivera and Levine for giving us the chance to speak on this important topic. I'm Ravi Reddy, the Associate Director for Advocacy and Policy at the Asian American Federation. Our organization represents the collective voice of more than 70-member nonprofits serving 1.3 million Asian New Yorkers. As previous speakers and council members have made abundantly clear, the Asian American community, as with all communities of color, stand especially vulnerable if this opportunity isn't taken to address longstanding systemic barriers to address healthcare and information access. As part of this effort, the city must acknowledge Asian Americans as a critical component of our essential workforce. Anything short of that risks putting our vaccine rollout on the back foot with our 1.9 million-strong Asian American community. The COVID-19 pandemic has resulted in a 35% increase in deaths compared to the five-year average in our community and our recently released report on the devastating impact of COVID-19 unemployment in our community. Especially in the Asian American community, the success of any mass vaccination effort hinges on getting the right information to Asian New Yorkers, the way they consume information. This means including community-based partners who have community credibility, especially with vulnerable populations like our seniors, as well as ethnic media outlets who are the primary medium of information consumption for many in our community and Facebook and other social media outlets that they may use. Language barriers present a formidable challenge, one that our community-based organizations are uniquely equipped to deal with. Amongst South Asian languages, 77% of Bengali speakers, more than 65% of Urdu speakers, and half of Hindi speakers were limited English proficiency. Even among Filipinos who have a reputation for high English proficiency, 39% of Tagalog speakers identify themselves as LEP. And for Asian American seniors living in poverty, LEP rates were 83% of Asians compared to 48% for non-Asians.
Time expired.
More than 90% of Chinese and Korean speakers, the speaking seniors, had a limited English proficiency. So I'm just going to skim down just a little bit and make some final remarks. So, you know, combined with culturally competent access to information, vaccine distribution in our community will depend on how well the city can account for the needs in our communities, such as seniors who have already been isolated due to the virus and language limitations, immigrants who may worry about their immigration status when it comes to any interaction with their government, and the significant digital divide that continues to impede city engagement with our community. So, for example, we're glad to hear of continued efforts to improve online portals, but the question is, while language access and digital divide together present a significant barrier to access, especially for our most vulnerable populations who are also most in need of vaccine. So this COVID-19 vaccine effort is an opportunity to create a model effort that puts community-based organizations who are already doing the work and already have the groundswell of trust and get them to work and develop trust in relationships with our most marginalized communities alongside the city entities mandated to help roll out the vaccine. So on behalf of the Asian American Federation, I want to thank you for affording me the opportunity to speak with you today. As I said in December, in front of your committees, this is an unprecedented situation, but we have an unprecedented opportunity to reimagine our city's relationship with our community. It's never been more necessary. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. As a reminder, all members of the public will be called on in order, and we thank everyone for their patience today. Next, we'd like to hear from Sarah Kim. You may begin when you are ready.
Time starts now. Sarah, you're still muted.
This is our key for Korean Community Services, serving Asian and Korean immigrants. As a Program Director for Public Health, I work with my colleagues, partners, and the city for our community members to overcome this pandemic. But overall, I see a gap in the services of New York City and the COVID data for Asian Americans. While the impact of COVID-19 on the Black and Hispanic communities is well-reported, the impact on Asian communities is underrepresented. But the Associated Press and the nonprofit news organization, The Marshall Project, suggested that Asian Americans have been one of the racial groups that hardest to hit, but it hardest to buy the disease. There are several reasons in that Asian communities are being seriously impacted. First, many Asians, especially New Yorkers, work in low-wage jobs or in the food service industry where it's not possible to work from home. Furthermore, Asian Americans are the most likely to live in multi-generational households, leading more chances at exposure infection. Secondly, Asian community has been suffering from harassment and anti-Asian sentiments that have become much more commonplace in public discourse. In the fear of the bias and hate, some members of the Asian community were reluctant to seek medical care if they do develop COVID-19. And the final cause is the lack of translators available at the public testing site. As the New York City grows our vaccination plan, we urge New York City DHH and Heather hospitals to work together with the community-based organizations and faith-based organizations. We will be able to reach out to minority communities to increase vaccine awareness and acceptance via tailored materials and ethnic local media campaigns. As the Phase 1B began yesterday, we received many calls from old others with a limited English proficiency, asking how to be the signing of the appointment and my charter prayer. Also, community organizations who will be accessible and convenient.
Time expired.
For the hard-to-reach communities to be served as a vaccination administration site by having nurses and pharmacists to speak their languages. Thank you, thank you for your time.
Thank you for your testimony. I'd now like to welcome Hallie Yee to testify. You may begin when you are ready.
Time starts now.
All right. Good afternoon. My name is Hallie Yee, and I'm a policy coordinator at the Coalition for Asian American Children and Families. Thank you, Chairs Levine and Rivera, and members of the Committees on Health and Hospitals for giving us this opportunity to testify. Since 1986, the ACF has been the nation's only Pan-Asian Children and Families advocacy organization, and we represent over 40 membership organizations serving the APA community, 49% of which lives in the hardest-hit areas during this pandemic. Our concern with this vaccination is that it will meet a similar fate as the testing programs throughout the city, failing to reach the most vulnerable and marginalized communities until much too late. We've been asking city council to hold our public health systems accountable to our community's needs through the following. First, demanding that the city provide accurate data collection and disaggregation of data. In order to best respond to this pandemic and reopen safely, we have to be able to track race and ethnicity and languages spoken for those who are tested and vaccinated so we can appropriately trace and take care of our families. We're not doing this now, and our community and our struggles are being erased. Without proper data collection and disaggregation, we are unable to target education and outreach to communities who need it most, nor to track the success of the vaccine itself. Second, that the city's health system can ensure that critical information gets to families in the language that they need. We must be prepared to reach and support families who are limited English proficiency. There is a lot of information out there about the vaccine, and we need to be able to nip that in the bud, especially for our communities that are most impacted. And that comes along with having to rebuild the trust that is not there due to past instances. And of course, demanding that the city ensure equitable access to the COVID-19 vaccine as access, treatment, delivery, funding, and healthcare and public health are fundamental values and necessities. DOH should build on its collaboration with frontline community-based organizations and institutions and really value the work that they're doing. When it comes to vaccine distribution, we need to be able to broadly and equitably make this accessible.
Time expired.
Okay. Ensuring best practices around COVID-19 testing and vaccination is key to our recovery. It's critical to making it safe for our communities' revitalization efforts. And as always, we're always here to be available as a resource and a partner to address those concerns. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. I'd like to ask if there are any council member questions. Okay, thank you to this panel for their testimony, and now we'll be moving on to our next panel. I'd like to now welcome Kathleen McKenna to testify. After Kathleen McKenna, we will hear from Ally Baum, followed by Christopher Boyle, followed by Mary Lynn Worldwars. Kathleen McKenna, you may begin when you are ready.
Time starts now.
Hi, my name is Kathleen McKenna. I'm a senior policy social worker at Brooklyn Defender Services. I want to thank the Committees and Chairs Rivera and Levine for holding this hearing today. Since the start of the pandemic, people in city jail custody, their loved ones, defenders, and advocates have been requesting transparency from the Department of Corrections and Correctional Health Services on measures being taken to keep people in custody safe. There's been little response. Public health officials have consistently warned that the answer to keeping people safe is to decarcerate and decarcerate now. Yet we've seen jail populations continuously rise since this summer. Today, the city has over 5,000 people in custody. Yesterday, the state announced Phase 1B of vaccine distribution, opening vaccine eligibility for people in custody of local correctional and juvenile detention facilities, as well as correction staff. At the Board of Corrections hearing that's happening right now, CHS testified that they've raised the need to vaccinate all people in custody to the city but are currently only authorized to vaccinate those at highest risk. Transparency is crucial, and a number of questions remain about vaccine distribution and accessibility in the jails, including how CHS is determining who is high-risk, when the vaccine will be made available to all people in custody, where people will be housed between doses, and what the plan is for people who are released prior to their second dose to ensure access in the community. People in custody and correction staff must be a priority when rolling out the COVID vaccine. I also want to second what many have said about the importance of clear messaging and education about the vaccine. For both people in jail and the community, there's widespread fear and skepticism surrounding vaccination. For New Yorkers who are already being monitored by NYPD, ACS, or ICE, the fear of sharing personal identifying information with the state to receive a vaccine might be a barrier to uptake. And as Black, Latinx, and immigrant communities have been most heavily impacted by the COVID pandemic, education and access from credible messengers must be prioritized for these communities. Thank you, and I welcome any questions.
Thank you for your testimony. I'd like to now welcome Ally Baum to testify. You may begin when you are ready.
Time starts now.
I'm a policy counsel of the New York Civil Liberties Union. I first want to make one point about vaccine distribution. The newly released COVID-19 vaccine finder reveals entire neighborhoods where there is not a single COVID-19 vaccination site. We must work with community-based providers and organizations to ensure that the vaccine reaches all of our communities. While my written testimony articulates three challenges: vaccine distribution mechanisms, equitable culturally competent vaccine distribution, and vaccine confidentiality, I'm going to focus the remainder of my time on two communities with particularly acute needs. First, those living in congregate care settings were rightly prioritized under Category 1A. But where nursing home residents are not vaccinated at home and workers are not vaccinated at work, they are left to navigate a confusing array of barriers to determine whether they are eligible, and they must traverse the internet to identify a vaccine location and make an appointment, despite the fact that these groups are among the least likely to be digitally literate or to have internet connectivity at all. These challenges are likely to increase as New York opens vaccine eligibility without any increase in the number of doses allocated to the state. Although the 1A populations will remain top priority, the developmentally disabled and others in congregate care settings are likely to lose vaccination slots to individuals in Category 1B who will be better able to navigate the online appointment scheduling systems and more likely to have the ability to travel to vaccination sites. Compounding these challenges, there is no public tracking of how many people living in congregate care settings and how many of the staff supporting them have received vaccines. Tracking is necessary to ensure that everyone in these populations who can tolerate the vaccine and wants to receive one is able to do so expediently. Secondly, we are grateful that teachers and education workers are included in Phase 1B. The vaccination plan must be crafted to ensure that vaccine distribution is used to bring students back into learning environments, not to exclude them unfairly. And the city must improve its school-related COVID data so the teachers and families can make smart decisions about the vaccine.
Time expired.
And can be directed where it is most needed. I'm sorry, and so that the vaccine can be directed where it is most needed. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you for your testimony. I'd like to now welcome Christopher Boyle to testify. You may begin when you are ready.
Time starts now.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Christopher Boyle. I am the Director of Data Research and Policy at New York County Defender Services. We're a public defense office that represents New Yorkers, thousands of cases in Manhattan's criminal and Supreme Courts each year. I have been a New York City public defender for over 25 years, and I want to thank the Chairs Rivera and Levine for holding this hearing on the city's plan to distribute the COVID-19 vaccines. It was with great concern that I read an article this past week in the city that CHS was apparently authorized to begin the process of classifying inmates in categories for vaccine distribution. I don't really have any idea why one of the very organizations that represents the clients within our city jails wasn't told first and was more part of the planning of the vaccination distribution. It's not that we, as defenders, aren't appreciative of the fact that our most vulnerable clients may be able to receive the vaccine, but there are many, many questions that, to this point, are unanswered. And these questions are as follows. How many doses of the vaccine will CHS have available for its first distribution? Will this allotment be replenished to account for the high degree of turnover within the city jail population? Which vaccine will be made available? Will persons who are vaccinated be housed with those that aren't vaccinated? And will there be some segregation between the first and second shots? Who will be designated high-risk to get the vaccine? The defender organizations have already received dozens of letters from CHS explaining that there are many clients labeled high-risk. Will every inmate who received the letter get access to the vaccine? If the highest-risk inmates exceed the number of slots available, how will the shots be rationed? If an incarcerated person gets the first dose while within jail custody and then is subsequently released, how will that person receive the second dose? What type of outreach has Doc done or considered to alleviate the obvious fears that this particular vulnerable population may have as to even taking the vaccine? Has CHS conducted any education efforts among the first inmates who may receive a vaccine?
Time expired.
Most of our clients don't have healthcare, let alone a primary care physician. Who should they ask for advice on taking the vaccine? It's this last point that I think is the worst. I would just ask that we need to be included in these conversations about what's happening. about what's happening on Rikers Island, and we're not being included. I know there's a hearing going on right now, so I'm hearing as real-time about what's going on over there, but I have real concerns about the fact that we're not being included in the planet. I can take any questions if you guys have any.
Thank you for your testimony. I'd like to now welcome Mary Lynn Worlwest to testify. You may begin when you are ready.
Time starts now.
Good, good afternoon. Thank you so much, Chairs Levine and Rivera, for your leadership in holding this hearing. I think the engagement shows how necessary it is and how much so many of us want to engage on these issues. I am here today specifically to talk about the jails. I am from the Prisoners Rights Project of the Legal Aid Society. And the public science is very clear about the vaccination needs of our clients. The congregate residential settings, like the jails, are extraordinarily dangerous settings for COVID transmission and should be prioritized for vaccine distribution. But as has been alluded to today, Governor Cuomo, as of today, has specifically excluded incarcerated people from the Phase 1B authorization. There's a small cohort of people that Correctional Health Services were able to obtain Phase 1A authority to vaccinate, but the rest of the jails are being left out in the cold. This is dangerous, and this is racist. Given that incarcerated people are overwhelmingly Black and Latinx, this is the same cruel and cynical disregard of Black and Brown people that council members Adams and Barron described earlier today, extends racist policies of incarceration to racist policies of vaccination. This must change. Now, while the state has its role, New York City has to do its job. There's frankly no excuse for the confusion and lack of transparency that we have seen so far. What's the plan for the jails? How long will it take Correctional Health Services to educate and vaccinate all willing people in the jails? When will all correction officers who are authorized be vaccinated? We ask for your close scrutiny of the implementation of this program. Thank you, and in particular, of the informed consent. There is enormous vaccine hesitancy, given the long history of jail experimentation on Black and Brown people in the name of science. And it is crucial that you, the leaders, oversee and closely monitor the knocking on doors, not just in the community to educate people, but on cell doors, in solitary confinement, in mental health housing, to educate and vaccinate all willing people in the jails. Thank you so much for your leadership.
Thank you for your testimony. I'd like to now turn it to the Chair for any questions. Chair Levine?
Well, just very, very briefly, I want to add my voice to those demanding that people who are incarcerated be added to eligibility immediately. Something I've been outspoken on now for some time. It's clearly a high-risk, congregate setting, where sadly there has been all-too-common documented instances of spread of COVID. And no one should be given a life sentence simply because of the threat of this pandemic. And you raise really important points, Mary Lynn, that it's not just about availability, but ensuring that this is delivered in an equitable, fair, transparent way that's not coercive. And I'm really glad that you've spoken out on that, and I certainly share those goals, and we will continue to advocate and monitor as this critical population remains unserved in this crisis. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. If there are any other council members that have questions, please use a Zoom raise hand function now. Not seeing any. I'd like to thank this panel for their testimony. Sorry, Chair Rivera.
I was just gonna add that this is one of the first questions I asked was about eligibility for incarcerated individuals and public outreach and education, and the answer was unacceptable and underwhelming. And so I just want to thank everyone here for their testimony. And we will, we know it is our responsibility, and so we thank you for holding us accountable.
Thank you, Chair. Seeing no other questions, I'd like to thank this panel for their testimony, and we'll be moving on to our next panel. In order of testimony, we'll be hearing from Josefina Perez, Dr. Elizabeth Bishop, and MJ Akma. Josefina Perez, you may begin when you are ready.
Time starts now.
Okay, I think we're having some technical difficulties, so we'll turn back. Dr. Elizabeth Bishop, you may begin when you are ready.
Thank you. So some brief comments. I'm the Director of Strategic Initiatives for CUNY, the Youth Studies Program, where I teach on the faculty, and I also serve as a director at Global Kids, a human rights educational organization that services thousands of young people. So I'm testifying today to advocate for the expedited vaccination of the hundreds of youth workers who are essential staff, who stand shoulder-to-shoulder with public school teachers. Since the start of the pandemic, it's been clear that youth workers lack any organized power to advocate and lobby for their labor rights or their health interests at a municipal level, even though they've been dispatched to the front lines of the crisis in schools, rec centers, community centers, public housing, cornerstones, home visits, and supply deliveries. When school reopening plans were rolled out in August, public school teachers were able to organize their PPE to go back into the buildings. Youth workers have no representation, like the union that the teachers have. Over and over, the crisis has surfaced, deep in equity, and youth workers are demographically and geographically more representative of the young people that we serve in our schools than teachers or administrators are. They lack collective bargaining, and they have faced the brunt of the yo-yo of policies and budget fallouts on the frontline rapid response. So today, I am asking you to ensure that all youth workers across New York cities are prioritized for vaccination alongside public school teachers. We know there's been some movement on the language here, but it's limited, so it's leaving out a lot of youth workers in the eligible category. The field of youth work is thankful for DYCD and DOE, especially the Office of Community Schools, for the steps they've already taken. But youth workers are paid less than teachers. They stand in the same building. They greet students at the same entrance. They manage the same attendance list and do outreach to families. They are the trusted community leaders, lifelines to families, and they are primary messengers to parents and guardians in the hardest-hit communities. They are the ones that are getting young people to show up to school, making sure that they're connected to food, healthcare, technology, and other vital needs. They're the lifeblood of the city, and they should get vaccinated alongside of teachers as an equity issue. If you want a successful reopening of schools and the economy, ensure that youth workers are prioritized. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. I'd like to now welcome MJ Akma to testify. You may begin when you are ready.
Time starts now.
Good afternoon. My name is MJ Akma with the Human Services Council, a membership organization that represents over one hundred and seventy human services providers in the city. Throughout the crisis, the cost of COVID-19 that's been passed along to the human services sector has been immense. Vital government contracts have been reduced and cut, and over forty thousand human services jobs in our city has been lost. That is a massive net job loss for a workforce that is eighty-six percent women and eighty percent people of color. The city must not allow the pattern of leaving behind human services workers to be replicated in the COVID-19 vaccine rollout. These essential workers have been on the front line since March, putting their lives at risk to ensure others are safe and that more New Yorkers are not in need of emergency services. All human services workers who are unable to do their jobs remotely must be explicitly included and prioritized in the vaccine rollout, assuming that frontline human services workers will neatly fall into other categories or only leave essential workers behind. Because many human services programs are funded through government contracts and provide legally mandated services, human services providers must keep their doors open regardless of high COVID-19 exposure and keep staffing levels steady regardless of how many workers need to stay home for sick leave or quarantine. This means that access to the vaccine is absolutely critical to keep these programs running. As many have discussed today, structural racism has been a driving force behind COVID-19 disparities. Going forward, it is vital for New York City to prioritize vaccine distribution in communities with the highest risk of hospitalizations and fatalities, not just by high infection rates or job titles. This includes those living in shelters and those who are incarcerated. Human services nonprofits are deeply integrated within their disproportionately impacted communities, entrusted by their clients to provide critical services. This puts nonprofits in a unique position to help reinforce competence and safety in the vaccine. Finally, I want to echo the need for New York City and New York State to work together to create a clear distribution plan and accessible system for vaccine appointment. Right now, there's a lot of confusion because of the lack of coordination between the city and the state. Thank you so much for this opportunity to testify.
Thank you for your testimony. I'd like to circle back and see if Josefina Perez is able to get on. Okay, I think we're still having technical difficulty, so we'll move on to our next panel. Oh, I'm sorry. Apologies. I'd like to ask if anyone has questions for this panel. Okay, seeing none.
Just a very brief comment that I am deeply sympathetic to the human service workers, youth workers, and others who have been left out of the current vaccine prioritization. Rafael. Maybe someone can, thank you. I've been vocal about this. You all are in the front lines. You've been taking risks during this pandemic. Your work has been more important than ever because of the enormous needs of the communities that you're serving. And you absolutely deserve to be part of this vaccine prioritization phase. I'm glad you're here to speak out and put those comments on the record, and you certainly have our support in that effort. Thank you for speaking today.
Thank you, Chair Levine. I'm not seeing any other questions, so I will thank this panel for their testimony, and we'll be moving on to our next panel. Next, I'd like to welcome Ronald E. Richter to testify. Following Ronald, we will have Nicole McVinnua, followed by Michelle Demott, followed by Miao Jenny Hua, followed by Vladimir Carolyn. Ronald E. Richter, you may begin when you are ready.
Time starts now.
Thank you so much. Good afternoon, Chairs Levine and Rivera and members of the Health Committee and the Hospitals Committee. Thank you for calling this hearing and allowing me to testify in behalf of the children we serve in the family and child-serving and developmental disability systems, critical work, critical staff who work with vulnerable children and families, and foster parents who open their homes to children and young adults during the COVID-19 pandemic. I'm Ronald Richter, Chief Executive Officer of JCCA. I've also been honored to serve as New York City's ACS Commissioner and as a judge in the city's Family Court. JCCA is a child and family services agency that works with more than seventeen thousand children and families each year. These are New York's most disadvantaged and vulnerable children and families, served by foster and residential care, educational assistance and remediation and care management, which provides crucial wellness services and care management to young people with behavioral health issues to prevent child abuse and maltreatment. In addition to families already in the child welfare system, JCCA stabilizes and strengthens families who are disproportionately impacted by the pandemic by providing preventive services, which are targeted intervention and community outreach that touch nearly four thousand children and families each year. The foster parents who welcome children into homes volunteer to put themselves and their families on the front line to help young people in need. There is no greater community service. During the pandemic, they have placed themselves and their families at risk by caring for young people who are, in many cases, not members of their family. Given our commitment to reunify children with their families of origin whenever possible, ongoing in-person visiting is crucial and legally required. Vaccination of foster families facilitates safe visitation between foster children and their families, and foster families have to be prioritized in vaccination.
Thank you for your testimony. I'd like to now welcome Nicole McVinnua to testify. You may begin when you are ready.
Time starts now.
Good afternoon, Chairs Levine, Rivera, and members of the committees. My name is Nicole McVinnu, and I am the Director of Policy at Urban Pathways. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today. Urban Pathways is a nonprofit homeless services and supportive housing provider. We assist single adults through a unique combination of street outreach, drop-in center services, safe havens, extended stay residences, and permanent supportive housing. Last year, we served over thirty-nine hundred New Yorkers in need. Over the past ten months, our programs have remained fully operational thanks to the dedicated frontline staff that have continued to work on-site throughout the course of this pandemic. Our staff have put their own health at risk to ensure the safety of our clients and residents. And like MJ spoke about, you know, human services providers across the city have come to the aid of those in need to provide food, childcare, and other critical in-person services. There are over a hundred twenty-five thousand human services workers in New York employed by the nonprofit sector who are at high risk of exposure as they continue to serve communities disproportionately impacted by COVID-19. Despite this, not all human services workers providing in-person services have been made eligible for the COVID-19 vaccine in Phases 1A and 1B. And as was spoken about, the majority of our staff and of human services workers are women and people of color, whose own communities have been disproportionately impacted on top of the communities that they also serve. Along with this, the guidance surrounding eligibility for the vaccine has been ever-changing and inconsistent. We have contracts with the state. We have contracts with the city. And the guidance has not always been clear. There hasn't always been clear interpretation of the guidance. You know, currently, you know, we heard in this hearing earlier that homeless shelters were being included, but it's still not, it's still not completely clear to us whether drop-in centers are included in this, whether street outreach teams are included in this. Tier-two shelters do not seem to be included in this guidance to provide shelter to families because they don't have shared sleeping, bathing, or eating accommodations as is specified in the state guidance. You know, we're also unclear whether or not individuals who are currently street homeless, who lack PPE and other basic needs and have high rates of pre-existing conditions, are going to be included in this if they're not, you know, currently enrolled in a shelter program. The folks that our outreach staff are consistently working with on the street to get inside. So these are all concerns, you know, that we still have, and we appreciate all the work that the city has done so far. But we really urge city and state leaders to work together to create a clear and equitable plan for the vaccine distribution. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony. I'd like to now welcome Michelle Demott to testify. You may begin when you are ready.
Time starts now.
Good afternoon, Chairs Rivera and Levine, and the distinguished members of City Council. I'm Michelle Demott, and I'm the Chief of Staff to Mitchell Nedburn, President and CEO of Samaritan Daytop Village. I first want to thank you for your continued support and efforts during these challenging times. Samaritan is a human service organization that provides comprehensive services to more than thirty-three thousand people each year through a network of over sixty facilities primarily located in the five boroughs of New York City. We offer a rich array of programs, including treatment for mental health issues and substance use disorder, transitional supportive housing, and innovative services for veterans, homeless individuals, women, children, youth, seniors, and families. The well-being of everyone we serve is our most important priority at this time. However, it is clear from the COVID-19 vaccination plan rollout that not all of our staff, nor all of our clients, are a priority. Samaritan employs an estimated thirteen hundred health and human service workers, and approximately fifty-five percent of those employees work in an unlicensed congregate care setting. In layman's terms, these are homeless shelters, serving the most vulnerable New Yorkers, including those who are low to no income with complex medical and behavioral health needs. The staff and clients in these facilities were not included in Priority 1A according to New York State guidance. Once again, during a resurgence, when all frontline essential workers are called to duty, the vaccine rollout does not impact all New Yorkers equally. In fact, again, it disproportionately impacts communities. In fact, again, it disproportionately impacts communities that have already been hardest hit by COVID-19 due to structural racism, albizim, and income inequality. Early on, we quickly adapted our services to continue reaching our clients safely amid the pandemic. To mitigate the spread of COVID, Samaritan was committed to serving our clients. And in order to reduce exposure and transmission during this public health emergency and to remain consistent with governmental mandates, we immediately adjusted our program operations. We purchased devices for both staff and clients incurring a huge expense, as well as providing both staff and clients with PPE. Additionally, we enhanced our cleaning and disinfecting protocols for all of our sites, not prioritize sites. Now just imagine operating an organization of this size where more than half of the employees provide essential city-contracted mandated services and not being able to provide them with a vaccine that can protect their lives. Administrative staff is forced to explain why one employee is deemed more valuable than another, why one client is deemed more valuable than another. We stand ready to help our city and our communities recover from COVID-19. We know that long-term success of New Yorkers requires all essential human service workers to be given priority access to the vaccine and ensure that there is equity and full transparency at every step of the allocation and distribution process. With the support of the City Council, we can ensure that New York regains their health and well-being and that our city retains its commitment to take care of those in need. I thank you on behalf of Samaritan, and we look forward to continuing to be on the front lines in partnership with you and your communities, serving the most vulnerable New Yorkers. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. I'd like to now welcome Miao Jenny Hua to testify. You may begin when you are ready.
Time starts now.
Hello, thank you, Chairman Levine and Chairwoman Rivera and City Council for the opportunity to testify. I represent the New York Doctors Coalition, a diverse group of doctors and health advocates located within or with local chapters in New York City. Our members are involved in clinical care, medical education, public health, and health advocacy more broadly. Since 2016, we have campaigned for a more equitable city and state response to chronic and systemic neglect of the health of low-income communities of color. Balancing equity and efficacy is not a zero-sum game. Ensuring equitable vaccine distribution inherently means reaching the vast majority of New Yorkers who are working class and belong to high-risk categories by federal and state guidelines. With this in mind, we have three main demands for the vaccine rollout going forward. First, decrease reliance on elite medical centers as points of distribution or dispensing PODs. While relying on large medical centers as initial points of dispensing was critical for reaching frontline health workers, the lack of community-based possible exacerbate existing COVID-19 housing equities as the state's rigid prioritization guidelines threaten to penalize providers for flouting the eligibility criteria, we have also witnessed elite medical centers liberalizing these criteria to include many non-patient-facing staff with few risk factors for severe COVID before frontline workers and high-risk groups. This is a serious issue, and we believe stems from little regulation on how elite medical centers implement vaccine prioritization in the first place. In October 2020, the State Department of Health released a prioritization matrix based on geographic prevalence. And the actual rollout and institutional chaos has beset most of the acclaimed institutions in this country with frontline staff often queuing behind non-clinical personnel. Meanwhile, lack of outreach to historically marginalized groups, many of them are patient-facing, has meant lower uptake among them, and this is also more pronounced as safety nets. Distribution through schools, food banks, houses of worship, independent pharmacy FQHCs can increase access to low-income communities
Time expired.
And may help address vaccine hesitancy. Mobile units capable of going door-to-door are more essential for reaching mothers with young children and homebound seniors. This leads me to our second main concern, which I'll quickly go through, which is that currently, we don't have the capacity to ramp up to the 400,000 doses per week that we do need to reach herd immunity by summer. If the majority of these doses are distributed through large centralized paws, this will be a diversion away from folks in New York City who have less resources to travel and less access to information. So efficient rollout has to be balanced with distributions through community paws as well as priority for homeless shelters, jails, prisons, isolation facilities, syringe exchanges, assisted living facilities. And finally, outreach, outreach, outreach. We need an aggressive plain language and multilingual health education campaign. Local and ethnic radio should be enlisted. Scheduling vaccines should not be, you know, as many have mentioned, through internet access, but be held in person as well as the telephone hotline. And also, a telephone hotline would be very important for the second dose of the Pfizer and Moderna vaccine, which do leave a lot of people incapable of going to work immediately afterwards, and people should be prepared and have access to a vaccine hotline for reassurance. Thank you so much for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you for your testimony. I'd like to now welcome Vladimir Carolyn to testify. You may begin when you are ready.
Time starts now.
Hi, and thank you for an opportunity to talk. I think a lot of the points I wanted to bring up were already discussed, but I just want to very briefly go for them. So first of all, I just wanted to have a clear, transparent answer to the question whether there were expired and like essentially wasted doses, because the reports have been flying around and would be good to know if it was actually true or not. And second, I really want to support the creation of a centralized waitlist where people can preemptively register for a vaccine, like even when they're not in the currently vaccinated priority group. I think that will go a very long way in making sure no doses are wasted as the, any, like, to be expired doses could be offered to the people from the waitlist. Third, given the current data on the vaccine supply in the past few weeks, it doesn't really seem to be that the supply is the main issue as of now and the distribution is. If you just run for the numbers, it's like we're doing less than 100,000 doses or 150,000 doses a week, and the supply is definitely higher than that if you just extrapolate from the known data. So I don't see the reason why we can't push the threshold or the administrator to available doses to at least like 60, 75% as opposed to like below 50, which it stands now. And the last two points were create a volunteer portal where both medical and non-medical people can sign up. Because right now, I was trying to find if I can help by any means, like organizational outreach, or otherwise, I couldn't really find it. Like, it's an infinite loophole, essentially, I think, like an infinite link redirection to find concrete ways to volunteer. And lastly, I really want to second using schools as awareness and vaccination centers, because you have staff nurses, you know, present anyway, and I think they're like huge point, like focal points of the community already.
Time expired.
We have like parental, parental groups, like sharing data on Facebook, WhatsApp, and whatnot, and a lot of people, I think, have like, a lot of classes have people working in the healthcare or other priority groups. So that would be a very strong point of like, both outreach and even like a vaccination center potentially. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak, Councilmembers and Chairs Levine and Rivera. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. I'd like to now turn it to the Chairs for any questions. Councilmember, excuse me, Chair Levine.
Hi, my very cute dog is making some noise now. I apologize for that. I'm gonna, gonna put on mute for one second.
I was just gonna say thank you to the panel, and I agree that we didn't hear a lot about training in volunteer workforce and opening up opportunities to people who want to help and, you know, who are we actually training to put these shots into people's arms? And I do hope we'll get more information available, and I just want to thank all of you for what you're doing. And of course, to Dr. Hua, thank you so much for your partnership and everything, and especially looking out for our FQHCs and our community sites and making sure that logistically, not only do they become an important part of this map, but that they're supported with the resources that they need. Chair Levine.
Oh, you said it perfectly, Chair Rivera. Thank you for covering me while Hermione was very excited there at that moment. I thank this panel for bringing up these important issues. And Dimitri, you brought up the challenge of volunteering, which has been a recurring theme today, and we're with you all the way. We're actually working on some legislation to acquire creation of exactly the kind of portal that you mentioned. And I know you asked about doses that have been thrown away, and we don't have anyone. My fellow Chair and I are not representatives of the administration, so we can't answer that. But of course, there have been published press reports about wasted doses, which is absolutely infuriating. I do think with the additional flexibility in eligibility groups now that we'll see less of that. I expect so, but we'll certainly be monitoring it closely. Thanks again to all of you.
Thank you, Chairs. I'd like to ask if any Councilmembers have any questions. Seeing no hands, I'm going to thank this panel for their testimony. At this time, we've concluded public testimony. If we have inadvertently missed anyone that has registered to testify today and has not yet been called, please use a Zoom raise hand function now, and you will be called on in the order that your hand has been raised. I'm seeing Cat, Catalin Andrews and Josefina Perez. We'll start with Catalin Andrews. You may begin when you are ready.
Time starts now.
Thank you so much. Again, my name is Caitlin Andrews. I'm the Director of Public Policy. I live on New York, a nonprofit with a membership of more than 100 community-based organizations that serve seniors throughout New York. Thank you, Chairs Levine and Rivera, for the opportunity to testify. I wrote my testimony on Friday. A lot has changed since then, and that's a good thing. We're glad to see some continued improvements. The fact that now 65-plus older New Yorkers are eligible for the vaccine, the creation of a hotline, these are improvements. We hope that trend continues. To put into context what's at stake, one of our member organizations who administered the vaccine at their nursing home heard from a tenant there that said she had not held her great-grandchildren, who had been born since March, two great-grandchildren that had been born, no opportunity to give them a hug. That's what's at stake here. It's about saving lives, but it's also about giving lives back to people who have been sheltering in place and fearful of really living their day-to-day life. So we really would love to see the city and the state find success in this distribution, and we're here to help. I think that to start, the city really needs to make clear that the essential workers that have been working on the front lines in communities to serve older New Yorkers are eligible through Phase 1B of the vaccine, specifically home-delivered meals providers. So cooks, deliverers, we know that delivery personnel were included today, but just really having that clarity to providers contracted with the city that they will be, they are eligible and can begin getting the vaccine would be incredibly helpful. And in addition to that clarity around HUD Section 202, so senior housing buildings throughout the city, Sarah Buildings, the folks that are working there, maintenance workers, service coordinators, also need to have clarity that they're eligible and can begin being vaccinated. We also need to really emphasize, as has been a theme today, the importance of opportunities
Time expired.
Who are low-tech, and that if there is a hotline created, as has been, that that doesn't yield long wait times. And it's the equitable opportunities for folks who are not able to utilize the internet or cannot afford internet access. And just fully collaborating with community-based organizations, these are the trusted providers on the ground. The city is starting to do that and to lean on that while simultaneously cutting indirect cost rates to all of these providers who we always turn to in an emergency. So the city can't both recognize late, but recognize that nonprofits are the folks that get the work done and simultaneously cut their funding. So we need, we need clarity, we need technology to not be the sole way that we're getting the word out, and we need to both utilize nonprofits and respect them and fund them for their work. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. I'd like to now welcome Josefina Perez to testify. You may begin when you are ready.
Time starts now.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Josefina Perez, and I am the Assistant Vice President of our Adolescent Residential Care at Sheltering Arms. Thank you, Chair Levine and Rivera, for the opportunity to testify before you today. Sheltering Arms is one of the city's largest providers of education, youth development, and community and family well-being programs for the Bronx, Manhattan, Brooklyn, and Queens. We serve nearly 15,000 children, youth, and families each year and employ more than 1,200 staff from across New York City. Several of our programs became eligible in the Group 1A, including our health clinic, mental health clinic, and our residences for adults with developmental disabilities. Our HR team worked quickly to ensure that eligible staff had the required proof of employment, including their category of eligibility. Staff in our health and mental health clinics have already begun to receive the vaccine and have reported a very smooth and quick process. While the process for our staff has been smooth, the rollout for the residents in our DDS program has been slower. We were partnered with CVS in order to vaccinate our residents. However, CVS has not yet received the vaccines. We were informed this week that residents may receive the vaccine from their primary care physician. So we are now arranging for residents to receive their vaccine in this way. We were very pleased to learn yesterday afternoon that educators and staff in our early childhood education and after-school programs, as well as our staff in our OCFS licensed residential and child welfare programs are now included in Group 1B of the New York State eligibility list for the COVID-19 vaccine. Our foster care program partners with 150 foster parents primarily in the Bronx and Manhattan, providing safe and caring homes for nearly 400 children and youth. We urge the city and state to prioritize foster parents to receive the vaccine. Due to legal mandates, foster parents must engage in various in-person interactions in order to support the safety and well-being of children and youth in care. While in-person interactions have been limited as much as possible, certain activities cannot easily take place virtually, such as the home assessment and family visits. To support the safety in children in our staff, we strongly recommend that foster parents be prioritized for the vaccine. Thank you so much for the opportunity to testify and for your commitment in ensuring an efficient vaccine rollout. I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. I'd like to see if the Chairs or any Councilmembers have any questions for these panelists. Okay, I'd like to ask one more time if we'd missed anyone who did not testify today. Okay, I'm gonna turn it back to Chair Levine and Chair Rivera. Chair Levine, for closing remarks.
Well, thank you so much, Ravani, for your great work leading us as our committee council. Thanks to all the incredible teams supporting the Health Committee and the Hospital Committee for your work today and every day. And it's always wonderful partnering with you, Chair Rivera. Thank you for everything you've done. What an incredible hearing this has been to all the members of the public who have come out and testified to questions of equity, first and foremost, for workers, for people who are incarcerated, for communities of color, for our seniors, for people who are vulnerable. You need resources, you need vaccine eligibility, you need an efficient system for accessing appointments. None of that is too much to expect. The city can and should do that. And we're glad that you've gone on the record today to to make sure that this point is not lost as we plan for the next critical phase of this rollout. So thank you again, and I'll pass it over to you, Chair Rivera, for your closing remarks.
Thank you so much, everyone, for being with us these past five hours. I know there was a lot that we wanted to know. Why did the vaccine distribution seems to be going so slow? What can we do to help it along so it goes much faster? Why can't we streamline and make the process more accessible to get more New Yorkers vaccinated? We received some answers today. Clearly, there is a lot of follow-up that Chair Levine, myself, and my colleagues and many of the advocates here have to do to make sure that this is an equitable process. And I'm just honored to be here, a part of this conversation with you all, and we have a lot of work to do. And I just want to thank you.
Okay, I think I have to give the official gavel here, which we're improvising with my hammer here, but there we go. The hearing is concluded. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks to Committee Council and all the staff.